Hello, hello. Hey folks, we're gonna get started here pretty soon. If everybody could come on in and take your seats. Ding ding ding. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everybody. If everybody could come on in and take their seats. We'll get this started. We appreciate everybody being here. Thank you very much. All right. Welcome. My name is Jeff Robbins. I'm Chair of the Colorado Energy and Carbon Management Commission. We are excited to be here for our first Rule 511 hearing. We've never had one of these before, and so we're excited that you are all available to be here and to testify before us this evening. I'm gonna go through some sort of ground rules. I'm gonna introduce the folks that are up here with us. To my right is Director Julie Murphy. Wave. Tricia Oath, Director of CDPHE's Environmental Department. Brett Ackerman is a Commissioner. Mike Cross. This is an attorney. Don't hold it against him. His name's Kyle Davenport. John Messner. And then Karen McGowan, to round out the Commission. So, we are here. First, we want to thank the STAR Group, the Save the Aurora Reservoir Group. We want to thank the Arapahoe County Commissioners. And we want to thank all of you from the public that are here. As I mentioned, this is our first local public hearing. This is an opportunity for us to come to the area in which proposed oil and gas is potentially coming before us on a permit. And it gives us the opportunity to hear from you, kind of in your backyard. So, we appreciate everybody being here. After having done the introductions, so we're gonna talk a little bit about admin and logistics. We do have interpretive services this evening. If you look in the back there, a couple of ladies are waving their hands. They can help folks that have interpretation needs. We also have childcare services. That is that way. And there are some kids already in there, watching movies and drawing and coloring, et cetera. So, if you've got children, they can take care of being in the childcare room. We are gonna take public comment this evening. I would note that there is always the opportunity to provide the Commission with written comment. And we can receive written comments this evening. You can go to our website and receive written comment or provide written comments there as well. You can go to our website and receive written comment or provide written comments there as well. In the back, as you were coming in, there to the left are a bunch of handouts about our Commission, about our rules and procedures, and about the Conference of Area Plan that we're considering. My understanding is that this is being recorded live, and it is being shown on... Who is it? Aurora Arapahoe? Who's doing the Facebook?
Arapahoe County.
So, Arapahoe County, online Facebook is streaming this. So, for all the bungling I just did, I'm now famous on Facebook. So, we have our public meeting policy that's in the back. Basically, we want to hear from everybody. We ask that everybody be respectful to each other. There's a lot of varying viewpoints, and we want to hear all of them. This is on the Lowry Conference of Area Plan. The hearing on this is scheduled for late June, but we're taking public comment again this evening. So, we're planning on ending at 8:00 PM. I've got about 50 people signed up. Each person will have an opportunity to present testimony for three minutes. I'm going to call folks up in groups of five, and I would ask the people that get called up to come and occupy these first five chairs. And then we'll have Speaker One and Speaker Two, and we'll try to rotate it. If we rotate it that way, we'll get through everybody in time. Mr. Davenport here is going to run a timer. It's got green, yellow, and red. I assume the green means you still have sufficient time. Yellow means you're starting to run close on time, so speed up like you're at a yellow light to get through it. And then, when it is red, your time is up, and we would ask that you summarize the things that you're saying. Okay. We do have some special guests who are going to give some opening remarks. We will start with the Director of the Energy and Carbon Management Commission, Julie Murphy. Oh, hold on. We're doing that after this. Okay. All right. Hold on. I already screwed up. So, we're going to do Arapahoe County first. Michelle, come on up. Maybe make yourself at home with the microphone and introduce yourselves to everyone.
Thank you. And good evening, everyone. On behalf of Arapahoe County and the Board of County Commissioners, thank you for joining us for tonight's public hearing. I'm Michelle Halsted. I'm the Director of the Commissioner's Office, and we are honored to welcome community and members of the Colorado Energy and Carbon Management Commission to the Arapahoe County Fairgrounds and Events Center. Due to longstanding prior commitments, the Board of County Commissioners were unable to attend this evening's meeting, but I wanted to share their appreciation to our residents for engaging in this process, as well as the state for hosting this local opportunity. Last year, Arapahoe County amended its oil and gas facility regulations to reflect updated health and safety standards, industry best practices, and alignment with recent state and local rules. Additional information on the county's regulatory process is available online, as well as some handouts in the back of the room. You can learn more about what's happening in Arapahoe County by going to our website, arapahoco.gov, and signing up for the Commissioner's Weekly Newsletter. So, thank you again for joining us this evening and sharing your feedback with the state.
Thank you, Michelle. We now will turn to Director Murphy for some opening remarks.
Thank you. And again, my name's Julie Murphy. I'm the Director of the Colorado Energy and Carbon Management Commission. Thank you, Michelle, and the county for hosting. Thanks to each of you for taking time out of your day to come and participate with us. I think it's an amazing opportunity to be here and to have our first 511 hearing in community, to hear from community. I wanted to take a few minutes to make sure, to set the stage for folks to understand the proposal that is before us. It's not long at all, but just to make sure we know where we're at, and then also what next steps look like for this process. So, first and foremost, I wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk about what are comprehensive area plans, or CAPs. They are something that this Commission, with the input of stakeholders, designed in 2020 to look at landscape-level planning for oil and gas development in a way that is complementary to how local governments approach large-scale development. It helps us all better plan for infrastructure and understand how to minimize and mitigate impacts. We collect information about the proposal, both at the CAP level or the cumulative area... Sorry. Comprehensive area plan level, and also at the OGDP, which is an oil and gas development plan. And so, that's a subsequent submittal that comes to the Commission if a CAP is approved that is specific to the actual location proposed for oil and gas development, the number of wells, related infrastructure. CAPs facilitate the consolidation of infrastructure electrification and intentionally phased timing of development. However, a CAP does not actually grant approval from the state for an operator to move forward with construction, drilling, or other oil and gas operations. That requires approval of an oil and gas development plan and to drill a well, a Form 2 or application for a permit to drill, or APD. This is a current representation of the proposal that is before the Commission for the CAP. I see some concerns about the map, and we can work on getting a better map put together. This is what is in our files and what we are looking at. As we understand it, as has been submitted to us by the operator, the proposal includes 32,000 acres of proposed subsurface mineral development, eight locations, 166 wells. There are existing wells in the proposal. And I think the other piece that's important, as I've heard a lot of feedback around it, is that the proposal no longer suggests or proposes that the operator will drill under the Superfund site. And so, I think that that's an important consideration as we understand the proposal that is currently before the Commission. And then, I wanted to touch briefly on the timeline. The application was submitted to us in October of '22. It has been through a couple of rounds of review, and some changes have resulted from that in the ensuing time period. In February of 2024, our staff, my staff, determined that the application was complete, which is a step in our review, meaning that all of the necessary materials are there to continue to review it. And then, it moves into what is called the technical review phase. It is currently under, with staff in a technical review phase. So, staff is currently reviewing it. It was important to us to have the benefit of this hearing, and other public comment periods occur before staff completes their review. So, we have the benefit of the input of this meeting. The public comment period specific to ECMC staff closed on May 5th. However, the Commission will continue to receive public comment all the way up until the hearing itself. And then, people may also submit either written or oral comment at the hearing as well. And then, importantly, right now, it is currently scheduled for a June 26th Commission hearing that will be a hybrid, or that will be a remote hearing, so people can participate from wherever they are. They don't need to plan on coming to downtown Denver. So, I wanted to just kind of, again, establish where we are in our process, what is before us, and then look forward to hearing from each of you tonight, who have taken time out of your schedules to come present to us. And I think with that, I'm handing it over to Tricia Oath.
Yep. Okay. Great. Thank you, Julie. And hello, everyone. My name is Tricia Oath. As Chair Robbins said earlier, I oversee the environmental programs at the State's Department of Public Health and Environment. I will be very brief, because we are here to listen to you, but I appreciate you indulging me for just a couple of minutes. I wanted to be able to share that, as part of the process of the Energy and Carbon Management Commission, looking at this comprehensive area plan, that the Department of Public Health and Environment consults with the agency. And when we do our consultation, we are looking at the project and evaluating what are the potential risks to public health and potential risks to the environment, and working on necessary measures to mitigate or address any potential risks that we, as the Department of Public Health and Environment, may see. So, we are engaged in evaluating this proposal at this stage. And then, as Director Murphy noted, in the event that a comprehensive area plan is approved for any project, there are additional steps for oil and gas development plans to have to be evaluated as well. And we, our department, also does consultation along the way for each of those oil and gas development plans, and assessing in more detail any potential risks to public health and the environment. So, thank you very much for being here. We're very much looking forward to hearing from you and understanding your perspectives.
Crystal?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Crystal Creanda. I am the Minerals Director for the Colorado State Land Board. Thank you for taking some time out of your evening tonight and giving me a few minutes to discuss the land board and the minerals that we own out at Lowry Ranch. This is an infographic of our oil and gas leasing process. It's pretty intense. It's in the back, if you want to take a look at it closer. But some big-picture takeaways. The State Land Board owns 4 million mineral acres and 3 million surface acres, which we lease for the benefit of public schools. So, the income that we generate flows through to the public schools. We are not a regulatory agency, so you just heard from ECMC and CDPHE. They are the regulatory agencies. We are just a landowner. So, we're like any other private landowner and have to go through all of the same processes for permits or regulatory processes that any private landowner has to go through. And as you can see on here, there's a lot of different chances for public comment. So, any development on state trust lands results in a lot of different opportunities for public comment, like the one we're doing here tonight. And for this CAP, the CAP decision will be exclusively with the ECMC and the county. So, we don't have any say in that. Just a little background out at Lowry. Oil and gas development started on parts of the ranch in the 1920s. Then, it went to the Department of Defense. The State Land Board acquired it, starting in the 1960s. And we have been leasing it for various uses, including grazing. We have a model airplane club out there, and oil and gas. We've been leasing for oil and gas on the ranch since the 1970s. This slide is just a little bit about the big oil and gas lease out on the ranch that is with Civitas. It covers 21,000 acres. So, in 2011, we hired two consulting companies, CityVenture and Meager Energy Advisors, to help us come up with some sort of development plan and identify biological resources, or important biological concerns out on the ranch. And then, we decided that we wanted to lease the ranch as a whole, as the whole 21,000 acres. So, our staff at the time decided that we needed a stewardship strategy. And so, we got the Nature Conservancy involved, ERO, their environmental consultants in Denver, Arapahoe County, City of Aurora, and CNHP. All of these stakeholders came together to create the stewardship stipulations and to help us draft our oil and gas lease that's out there right now. So, it has a lot of robust stewardship stipulations currently in place. And we also did an RFQ process. So, that's a request for qualification, where we went out and vetted anyone that wanted to bid on our oil and gas lease to make sure that they had the resources necessary to implement all of the stewardship concerns and the stewardship stipulations that we put in place. We wanted to make sure they had the resources to do so. And ultimately, in 2012, ConocoPhillips was awarded that lease. Oh, and then, in 2020, it was transferred to Civitas. And again, our staff, our board, had to approve that assignment, and we had to vet Civitas to make sure that they were able to implement the robust stipulations. So, working with all those stakeholders, I only have a minute, like a minute left. But working with all those stakeholders, they came up with this tier map. So, they have a disturbance cap. They can only disturb 3% total of the acres that they leased, or 650... 3% or 650 acres. And what this tier map tried to do was push development onto previously disturbed lands. So, it's ranked from 1 to 4, but everything in green, they cannot put a pad location on. These were identified biological concerns that we wanted to protect. And down to 4, that is the pink area. That is where we prefer development to be. And so, you can, they can place a pad on blue, gray, or pink, but it will just count differently towards their development max. So, there was ample stewardship stipulations that those agencies, we all worked together to put in place. There is robust annual wildlife surveys that have to take place on various species, plants, air, water. And then, we have annual meetings and reports that they report out to us with all of the results. And we use those results when we're going out to do a pad sighting. There's other things in place besides the oil and gas lease, which I'm not going to get into. And then, just locally, so our agency, the money that we generate funds the Building Excellent School programs, the BEST program, which is a capital construction arm of the Department of Education. So, we raise money. We give it to the Department of Education, and they give grants out to local public schools. And here in Arapahoe County, Arapahoe County has received 24 grants and $105 million. And it funds things such as roof repair, HVAC systems, or this is the Deer Trail School that was built with BEST money here in Arapahoe County. And that is all I have for you today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We now are going to move into the presentations. We are going to start by recognizing two... Oh, yeah. Go ahead, John. You're next. Sorry.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. My name's John Messner. I'm one of the Commissioners with ECMC. I sit in the seat with expertise in land use and local government. I've been on the Commission going near five years now. And in a previous life, I was a County Commissioner with Gunnison County. I did want to chat just a little bit about two things. One, the dual regulatory process between the state and local government when it comes to oil and gas permitting, as well as opportunities for engagement into the public process at the different stages of the state process that we go through. In order to talk about that, I want to take just a step back and talk a little bit about Senate Bill 19-181, which reimagined the mission of the, what was then the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, and is now the Energy and Carbon Management Commission, which shifted our mission from fostering oil and gas development with consideration of public health and the environment to regulating oil and gas in a way that protects public health, safety, welfare, the environment, and wildlife resources. As part of the implementation of SB 19-181, it also created a clear local government authority over the regulation of surface impacts associated with oil and gas development. It also created additional transparency and public engagement opportunities with the ECMC Commission. And I'm really excited to see so many people here tonight engaging in that public process in what was a newly-created local 511 public hearing process as part of a CAP review. And so, super excited to have everyone here for the first implementation of that piece. So, different opportunities for local engagement in the state process include this local public hearing that we have here today, which is a listening session for folks to be able to share their thoughts on the application we have before us. There will also be, as Julie indicated, opportunities for public comment and engagement at the hearing process for the comprehensive area plan. In addition to that, there will be additional... Should it make it through that initial public hearing, there will be opportunities for folks to be able to engage in the individual oil and gas development plan stage. And so, many opportunities for the public to be able to engage in our process, and I encourage you to take that opportunity. The other piece I want to talk about is the dual regulatory authority for oil and gas permitting that occurs between the state and local governments. Like I indicated, SB 19-181 created an explicit authority for local governments to be able to permit surface impacts for oil and gas development. That dual regulatory... That dual regulatory authority means that both the state and local governments have the ability, not only to regulate oil and gas, but an operator who is applying for a permit must get both a state permit and a local government, from a local government that chooses to regulate oil and gas development, in order to be able to move forward with their development. And so, at this point, we're here reviewing this at the state level, and I know that there's ongoing opportunities at the local government level for review as well. And certainly, I encourage you to engage in those processes. The local government is also involved with the permitting process at the state. And so, there's lots of opportunities for local government consultation and input provided throughout the ECMC review process, including pre-application hearings, formal consultations with local governments in which the cap is involved, and disposition of the local government's land use regulations or comprehensive area planning that needs to be given by the operator as part of their hearing application. And so, we look forward to continuing down this process, but wanted to give you a little background on how that dual regulatory authority happens between the state and local governments.
Thank you, Commissioner Messner, for the overview. It's very helpful for everybody. All right. To begin the public comment portion, we're going to recognize two folks from STAR, Marcia Goldsmith-Cammon and Conrad Hugan. We're going to provide them 10 minutes to testify. And we're doing this because they were one of the petitioners that asked to have this, and we appreciate that. So, we're going to give you a little extra time, so you can sort of frame your narrative for your folks. This timer's going to be set for 10 minutes, and we'll start it when you guys are ready to go.
Can you hear me?
Might get a little closer.
Okay. Is that good? Thank you. My name is Marcia Goldsmith-Cammon, and on behalf of Save the Aurora Reservoir, STAR, I want to thank the ECMC commissioners for giving us this opportunity to address you right by the cap. Since this is the first-ever local public hearing, we are honored to be the community granted this process. As you can see from the number of people gathered here tonight, the community is very concerned about the Lowry Ranch cap proposal and intend, through this public comment process, to share why they are so concerned. I urge you to deny the applicant's request to develop the Lowry Ranch cap. First, this proposal...
Folks, folks, as I said, we really kind of want to give everybody the opportunity to speak. I know you all, if you wanted those claps to substitute for your testimony, that would be great. But what we really want to do is give everybody a chance to speak without interruption. So, if we could do that, I think everyone will have a full opportunity. We've got the clock turned off, so you're going to have your full time, and now you can proceed. Thank you.
First, this proposal is supposed to be comprehensive area plan. Comprehensive should refer to covering a large scope completely. There's very little complete about this cap application as submitted for review. There's more that this applicant is missing and not considering the material actually covered. Fire risk is an example. There's no mention of fires due to the fact that two of the proposed well pads are sitting only 3,000 feet from residential neighborhoods and squarely within what is known as the wildland urban interface. The Lowry Ranch property includes 10,000 acres of Piedmont Tall Grass Prairie with average local wind speeds of 13 to 16 miles per hour, creating the perfect conditions for fire. Seismic activity, that's going to be covered later. The long-range plan and the impact to the public and wildlife. The public asked for future plans for the layout, specifically in relation to the multiple oil and gas facilities that currently exist and those being proposed. The travel paths are unclear. What will happen to the land when the wells are finally plugged? What's the rehabilitation plan? This cap needs more time to provide the public with details to be truly comprehensive. All factors must be taken into account by conducting studies to assure safety as part of every aspect. Expert, unbiased, third-party studies must be performed prior to even considering this application. Modeling must be developed to fully understand the cumulative impacts of such a large fracking project on air, water, noise, and seismic activity. The public has provided the state with numerous peer-reviewed scientific studies, many of which were conducted right here locally in Colorado. Please take the time to review the studies that we provided. ECMC has paused the cumulative impacts rulemaking process, which would have been applicable to a project of this size and magnitude. Minimally, the cap review process must be delayed until these new cumulative impact rules are adopted. Ultimately, the decision lies within your hands. By the end of this evening, the community will clearly demonstrate to you why you need to deny the cap. And now, Conrad will give his piece.
And thank you, Marcia, and members of the commission for being here. Before I begin with my formal remarks, I want to start with a little bit of an experiment. I've got $1 in my hand right here, and I will trade this $1 with anybody who will give me 10 of their dollars. So, I give you 1, you give me 10. Commissioners? Of course not. It's a bad deal. And that experiment is relevant because Civitas is trying to put the same bad deal on all of us while violating Rule 314. My name is Conrad Hugan. I'm a retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel. And even though I spent most of my career in the courtroom, I was an executive officer for the Assistant Vice Chief of Staff of the Air Force, and I deployed to give legal advice for our air campaigns over Iraq and Afghanistan. After I retired, I served in the federal judiciary as Deputy Chief of the Defender Services Office in the Administrative Office of the US Courts. And today, that is a $1.5 billion program that ensures the right to counsel for everyone in a federal criminal court. And currently, I'm an adjunct professor of law at the University of Denver, and I serve on advisory boards at the state, county, and local levels. But I want to be clear, I don't represent nobody today except myself. I'm speaking in my personal capacity as somebody who lives in town's reach and someone who opposes a project that will cost billions in cumulative impacts and violates Rule 314. Here's why this is such a bad deal for everybody in Colorado. Number one, Lowry Ranch is going to cost over $1 billion over the next 20 years in ozone nonattainment costs. Fracking and drilling are Colorado's leading producers of ozone, and we're already in severe ozone nonattainment. And Civitas wants to build 164 ozone factories in our backyard, and their application is silent about ozone nonattainment, even though Rule 314 requires, and I quote, "total," underline, highlight, "total" hazardous air pollutants analysis. And because they failed to do their job, I had to find a study from Oklahoma City to figure out how much this is going to cost us. If you want to see the numbers, please read my written comment. It explains this figure and everything else I'm going to talk about. Number two, this project is going to cost over $500 million from asthma alone, and that's based on National Institute of Health data. And that's on top of the suffering, of course, that it causes. Science has linked fracking to asthma and a host of serious health conditions. But the applicant concludes, and I'm not kidding, you can't make this up, in Exhibit 0, I'm sorry, O-1, Appendix B, they conclude, "There are no adverse health risks to nearby communities." They're building 164 asthma inducers in our backyard, and that conclusion is straight out of the big tobacco playbook, and it doesn't fit. I focused on asthma because it's distinct, it's obvious, and it impacts underserved communities at a much higher rate. So, I was stunned when I examined the application, and I searched every word, and asthma wasn't mentioned once. Number three, and this is the biggest of all, Marcia talked about it, earthquakes induced by the Lowry Ranch cap will cost taxpayers billions, depending on the magnitude, the location, and the frequency. A 6.6 magnitude earthquake in the Denver area is going to cost $22 billion. And that's from your colleagues at the Colorado Geological Survey. According to the United States Geological Survey, fracking causes earthquakes two ways, through the drilling and fracking process and through injection wells. And Civitas wants to build 164 earthquake makers, but they failed to discuss those impacts at all. They didn't even put the word earthquake in their application. And they actually want 4 of those earthquake makers very close to here, next to an earth and dam that's holding top of 153 million of purification equipment that could breach 72 trenches containing 138 million gallons of toxic waste across the highway from Buckley Space Force Base and its national security mission. That's the parade of horribles, and they didn't talk about any of it in their application. That is the queen mother of Rule 314 violations, and it alone is enough for you to deny this application. Number four, a wildlife, a wildfire here, I'm sorry, on the same scale as the Marshall Fire, and I hope everybody remembers that from two years ago, would cost us $5 billion. Fracking's going to bring 164 gigantic flamethrowers that flare, thousands of trucks, or truck miles, and that hot exhaust going over 32,000 acres of tinderbox land. And the application mentions wildfires zero times, even though this part of Arapahoe County is very much like the topography and geography of Louisville and Superior. Except, we have a lot more homes, we've got a vital military base, and we have a lot more to lose if there's a wildfire here. Number five, fracking reduces bird populations by at least 15%, according to a peer-reviewed study published by the American Chemical Society. And grassland and migratory birds suffer the most losses. And incredibly, Exhibit O-D in the application concludes minimal impact to the ecosystem. And it says it 10 times, 10 times, minimal impact. A 15% loss, I don't care where you come from, of birds is not minimal, and it is another 314 violation and an additional $2 billion in harm over the next several years. Number six, the Lowry Ranch cap is going to cost residents $4 billion in home sale losses and insurance hikes over the next 20 years. I've looked at multiple studies, I hope you've looked at them too, and I've calculated this project is going to cost me and my wife $40,000 if we decide to sell our home. And that's assuming our foundation hasn't been cracked by a frac quake. And that's on top of the $250 a year we have to pay in addition to the insurance rates we already pay. It's the sixth highest in the country, and they want to put more costs on each one of us. You multiply that by thousands of impacted residents over the next couple of years, and you get the $4 billion really, really quickly. And I want to conclude with the $1 for $10 offer I started with. And I want to multiply that by a billion. Civitas claims they're going to bring us $1 billion in benefits over 15 years, but they failed to disclose, unlike me, and at least I was upfront, I said, "Give me 10 bucks upfront." They failed to disclose their project is going to cost Coloradans at least $10 billion. $1 billion for $10 billion is a bad deal, and Civitas failed their burden under Rule 314. And because they didn't do their job as required by law, I'm here, we're all here, asking you to do your job as required by law and deny this application. I yield the floor.
Thank you. I have down one elected official, Rep. Eliza Hammack. Is Representative Hammack here? Yeah. Hi. Are there any other elected officials in the audience? All right. Rep. Hammack. Oh, do we have somebody over here to the left? All right.
Thank you for having this unprecedented public hearing. My name is Representative Eliza Hammack, and I stand with 88,000 citizens in this district to beg you to not do this project. Their lives will be changed irreparably if this proposal goes through. I ask that you be true to your redefined role in our state based on Senate Bill 19-181, and that you listen and take notes on all that you hear today. We are concerned about the air quality. The Lowry Ranch cap will further pollute the air and degrade the air quality of the North Front Range region. This is the same air that the US Environmental Protection Agency downgraded for ozone nonattainment from serious to severe in 2022. We ask that you protect our water quality. The Lowry Ranch cap will require 4 billion gallons of fresh water that will be drawn from Colorado sources at a time when some Colorado homes are calculated to run dry by 2050. We ask that you understand it's an unprecedented geography that we live in here. The Lowry Ranch cap will frac not only the Aurora Reservoir and its dam system, but also the Denver-Arapahoe disposal site and the Lowry Landfill Superfund Site, which contains 138 million gallons of industrial waste. The EPA has expressed concerns about the bedrock microfractures that would be caused by fracking. There has never been a comprehensive seismological study, and we ask that you allow this study to happen before you move forward. Please, as this representative of this area, listen to these very well-informed families and then carry out your mandate under Senate Bill 19-181 to protect public health, safety, and welfare, and the environment and the wildlife, and disapprove of the Lowry Ranch cap. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right. Was there anybody else, an elected representative? Okay. All right. The next few folks we're going to call up are folks that signed up, and they have kids. So, we kind of want to give them the opportunity to go first. I'm going to call up four, five names, Andrew or Coris Young, Rachel Markowitz, Corey Hopper, Bree Deliza Zoller, and Lucy Molina. If those five individuals could come up, and you can get ready to testify by occupying these chairs, and we'll start with Andrew or Coris Young.
My name is Coris Young. I live in Centennial, Colorado. Although fracking laws are more enforced now, fracking companies are still finding ways to, loopholes to bypass regulations. Our water and air are still not safe from fracking. The fracking proceeds process pollutes the water and releases harmful chemicals into the air. This is a fact, not a probability. Fortunately, the reason we have to stop this before it starts is because, once you make the land-altering change, you can't just press Ctrl-Z and undo it. It's permanent and will be much harder to undo. So, this night here, so, so to everyone here this night, this is one of thousands of reasons why we need to stop the fracking sooner than later. Think back on your childhood, when the water and air were clean and not in danger of being poisoned. But now, think about your kids, grandchildren, or even you. Maybe, being even you, will have to suffer a punishment worse than death, having to live in pollution. We live in that environment. We make it an environment that we make it sick or develop diseases that prevent us from enjoying life. Also, if you keep polluting, soon you can't just run away from it or pretend like it doesn't exist. If you don't come to this, it, if you don't come to it, it will come to you. This is why fracking companies like Civitas are hurting more than helping, all for the sake of money. Most people don't recognize how dependent we are on the environment we live in and how we cannot escape being connected to that environment. But fracking always harms the environment. Do we need oil more than water and air? Are we making a plan that considers the next seven generations? Are we making a plan that will allow my generation to grow up with hope and health that allows us to fix the problems created by others? I feel like all I hear is that everyone is trying to make the world better, a better place. But I don't see how using billions of gallons of drinking water and a key ecosystem for fracking does that. We... We must transition away from fossil fuels to avoid total economic collapse for my generation's future and all the children that will inherit the earth. We must stop it now. The earth is not given to you by your parents. It is loaned to you by your children. Thank you for listening to what I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Please bear with me and my voice, I'm under the weather. I stand before you today as a very concerned mother and member of this community. I'm urging you to reject the proposed Lowry Ranch cap, which would introduce 166 fracking wells dangerously densely populated urban area. Our community is already facing significant challenges to public health. My children, amongst so many countless others, are struggling with severe asthma and respiratory issues exacerbated by air quality. Arapahoe County and Denver Metro is already in severe nonattainment of federal EPA standards since 2022, as you've already heard, indicating a pressing need for measures to improve our air quality, not exacerbate the problem. According to the Physicians for Social Responsibility's recent compendium, the Clean Air Task Force publication "Gasping for Breath" estimates there will be more than 32,000 summertime asthma attacks in children under the age of 18 due to ozone smog resulting from oil and gas pollution this year alone in Colorado. We must address, in addition to the health issues, the very real threat of wildfires. With our local Fire Station 13 already being short-staffed and currently facing double-digit response times, the introduction of fracking operations near our community and our homes only serves to increase the risk of catastrophic wildfires, putting the lives and our properties in jeopardy. The proposed fracking site is also, as you have heard, near the Lowry Superfund Site, compounding environmental risks and potentially exposing our community, my community, to further toxins and pollutants. This is a reckless gamble with the health and safety of our residents, particularly our dear children. I implore this commission to heed the overwhelming evidence provided by scientific research and prioritize the well-being of your community over the interests of profit-driven industries. Approving the cap would be a grave mistake, setting a dangerous precedent, and further endangering our community. Follow Erie. Take a look at what is happening there. Take a look at the spills. We urge you to protect the health and the safety of our community. This is my daily life. We should be passing out basketballs and hula hoops during recess, not rescue inhalers. Our health and our children's health is worth fighting for. Our future generations deserve nothing less. And I'll say the same thing to Arapahoe County Commissioners: Be bold, be like Boulder, and deny the cap.
Thank you. Corey Hopper. No Corey Hopper? Oh, here we go. Take your time.
Hello, my name is Corey Hopper. I'm a resident of the South Shore neighborhood in Aurora. My husband and I moved there in 2016 because we wanted to be close to the Aurora Reservoir and all the recreation opportunities and the options for wildlife viewing that are afforded. We started our family here, and now we have a four-year-old son and a one-year-old daughter. The proposed plan to drill over 160 wells, starting at just 3,000 feet from my neighborhood, has me greatly concerned for the health of my children and the health of our entire community. Numerous scientific studies have found serious health impacts from oil and gas fracking. Fracking well density has been associated with cardiac, neurological, respiratory, and cancer-related illnesses in people that live near wells. In addition to health concerns caused by fracking, a USGS report has shown faults in the area where there is planned drilling. There are also faults along the Aurora Reservoir Dam and the Superfund Site. As the drilling is right in the middle of all this, just a minor shift of terrain could have catastrophic implications on both the environment at the Aurora Reservoir and the toxic chemicals present at the Superfund Site. The Lowry Ranch cap proposal has wells going in too close to our neighborhoods, too close to our elementary schools, too close to the Aurora Reservoir, and too close to the Lowry Landfill Superfund Site. I'm imploring the ECMC, the organization tasked with regulating oil and gas, in a manner that protects public health, to deny the Lowry Ranch cap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias por permitirme estar aquí el día de hoy. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here today, and also thank you for your public service. My name is Molina. I've had, I'm your good neighbor, Farmer City here. I've been testifying before you all for many years. I fight environmental racism. In, I will just straight up, more fracking, more refining. That refining will be refined next to my house, as some of you all know, right? I have been fighting environmental racism against Suncor Oil Refinery for years, okay? The type of impacts that our community has faced from cancer, asthma, bloody noses, stomachaches, leukemia, just to name a few, heart disease. I just heard some of our neighbors here saying that they have heart problems. We have Bella Romero here in Greeley that have been fighting. I was just told that some of our teachers from Bella Romero have cancer, okay? They have a fracking site right behind, right behind the school. That is environmental injustice. The difference there is that we're more of a Latino community out there, right? Type of privilege. So, I would say it's, people, please. On behalf of this community, because whatever happens here, it's going to impact me next door to my house, because that refinery is next to my house, okay? So, yes, on behalf of this community, I stand with them to deny this permit. Come on, stop fracking our state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Molina. All right, we're going to call up a few more people that have kids or are young. Madhava Chitaur, and then Haley Young. Is that right?
I thought I heard my neighbor for three of eighteen dollars.
Yes, Bree Deliza Zoller, yes. Come on up. Ms. Chitaur, if you just want to sit right there real quick, we'll get you next. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right, good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Bree Delisi Zoller. This is Zoe Zoller. She might be speaking up as well. She's a very talkative toddler. I'm here tonight as a concerned community member, and also, more importantly, as a mom. Let me tell you, being a mom means I've got a black belt in worrying, especially when it comes to the safety of my daughter. When I look at our beautiful reservoir, I don't see an opportunity for profit. I see weekend picnics, smores on the shore, my daughter on the playground. I see a source of life for our community, not a site for a potential disaster. Yeah. Fracking comes with risks: risk of water contamination, air pollution, and even earthquakes. I see a source of disaster for our community, or I'm sorry, you made me lose my spot. Okay. I don't know about you, but I'd like to keep my mornings shaken up with toddler tantrums before the caffeine hits and not by tremors. So let's talk about that water that we need for our morning coffee. We can't live without it. It's literally the stuff of life, and we are not always flush with it here in Colorado. We need to protect this limited resource of ours. I understand the need for energy and economic growth in Colorado, but can't we find solutions that don't involve playing Russian roulette with our health and safety? Renewable energy resources are out there, just waiting to be tapped, and they don't come with the side effect of potentially poisoning our drinking water and contaminating the air that we breathe. I urge you to think about the future, think about your children, your grandchildren, and the legacy that you want to leave behind. Let's keep our water clean and our community safe, because at the end of the day, when I tuck my daughter in, I want to know that I've done everything that I can to keep her safe. And that includes standing here tonight, speaking out against fracking by our reservoir and our community. Thank you for your time and consideration, and remember, if we wouldn't want to drink frac-flavored water, we shouldn't make our children do that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I am Madhvi Chitaur, a 13-year-old climate justice activist and the youngest United Nations child advisor. I'm also the founder of the nonprofit Madhvi for Ecoethics and the Ecoethics Global Movement. I have been an activist since I was five years old, and I'm here because my rights as a child for clean air, clean water, clean soil, clean food, and great health are at jeopardy. I'm also representing all the children who couldn't be here and also who fear to raise their voices. I have been working with Commissioner Jeff Robbins, Commissioner McGoohan, Commissioner Mezner, et cetera, since 2019, when I was eight years old, on various rulings like setbacks, Suncor refinery permits, produced water and cumulative impacts. In 2020, when I was nine years old, during the COGCC's Mission Change Rulemaking, I sat through all the hearings from September to December 2020, and my suggestions to mandate pre-drilling water sampling and its data submission during the permit process were implemented as rules by the ECMC. That's a major win for the surface, storm, and groundwater conservation. I am totally against all new drilling in the Lowry Ranch. I remind the Commissioners about the Mission Change Rulemaking in 2020 because those hearings primarily came out about only because many of us, including me, protested the presence of oil wells in the midst of our neighborhoods. Now, again, I see that repeating. Why can't the ECMC revoke the permit of oil wells after they see a thriving neighborhood has established in the vicinity? And we are seeing the impacts of the climate crisis. Climate scientists and even the UN have warned that new drilling must be totally aborted to keep Earth's temperature rise within 1.5 degrees Celsius. Why don't you make Keystone Peak Resources use the wastewater from the city's water recovery system? Why should we use the pristine waters of Aurora, and why should that reservoir be used? Please think. As Commissioners, you have the power to protect our basic life elements: air, water, and soil. And so, please, exercise that power and support the people and not the oil and gas industry. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Haley Young. Thanks for the help on the microphones, too.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for having this hearing. I greatly appreciate everything that everyone did here so that we can be here tonight. The question before us is not whether fossil fuels underneath us should be extracted, but if government is fully prepared to regulate these operations and ensure the health at this time, tonight, that's what we're deciding. Are you ready to defend our health, safety, and water security? Do you have a plan? The ECMC's cumulative impact rules due last month were always intended to be applied to this fracking plan. However, Colorado recently removed that rule conveniently for Civitas so that they could proceed with this. As a professional engineer, professional land surveyor, and lead neighborhood development-accredited professional that works in this area, designing neighborhoods, and I coined the term "long-range ethics" in my articles published in professional journals, I can see that this plan doesn't provide the sustainability, security, or freedom presented by the operator. It is apparent there is not a truly comprehensive plan at this point, as government is not moving at the same speed as Civitas. Reported on Reuters to be the most successful oil and gas company in Colorado, producing 160,000 barrels of oil equivalent per day and worth $4.5 billion. Frankly, Civitas's presentation and image is unparalleled. We couldn't ask for a better company to be using billions of gallons of drinking water in high-priority habitat for fracking. But we need more than a facade of sustainability and carbon neutrality granted through credits purchased from massive profits. Civitas has hundreds of spills reported on the ECMC website. We are grateful for your transparency. That's a start. But with the data and plans, we recognize this is likely, this may be a small ratio compared to other companies, but we can see these numbers on paper don't equival- equal actual safety. They don't fully represent health impact and seismic risks that may take decades to manifest. Fracking under Superfund Sites leaking to fragile sandstone bedrock in the Aurora Reservoir Dam poses catastrophic threats. What probability is worth the loss of clean water to millions? Civitas is not legally obligated to return to fixed state of emergency crises. They are legally obligated to return profits. And they are likely to cause these state of emergency crises after they've already made their profits and left. Aurora's reports on Civitas's operations have made it clear that government involvement is critical for regulation and compliance, and Arapahoe County is facing budget stress, making it difficult to regulate this operation without the state's help. Data correlations and accountability will be nearly impossible without the cumulative impacts, which are an important step towards true sustainability and true freedom from not just foreign oil, but all fossil fuels. Giving the government a little time to set proper precautions will not devalue the materials to be extracted or reduce tax revenue. So please, do not approve this cap before the cumulative impact rules are in place.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there anybody else, is there anybody else with children that would like to speak? We'd like to recognize you now. Those are the folks that signed up. Anybody else? Yep, come on up. State your name, and we'll hear from you.
Hi, my name is Scott Brown. I've been a resident of Arapahoe County for a little over 50 years. Grew up at Sixth and Chambers, and I kind of want to attest to the things that have been said here. The seismic issues are real. I've lived through those earthquakes that were caused by the federal government pumping pesticides down into a well at the Arsenal. And it happened in the '60s. It was, you know, when you're a little kid, you think, well, hey, that's pretty good. You know, the house is shaking, and you don't know why, and it goes away, and then comes right back, and it shakes again. But then, as you get older and you realize, you know, that Basin F at the Arsenal was the most polluted square mile on the face of the earth, and they were pumping that stuff at high pressure down a well, trying to get rid of it. So it happens, and it's happened before, again. And I kind of want to focus on, we trusted, my parents trusted, and later in my life, I trusted the federal government, actually, over here at the Lowry Landfill, to maintain best practices. And really, they failed us. They failed us at the Arsenal because they didn't know. But at the time, they had best practices, right? They thought they were doing the right thing. They were trying to get rid of those pesticides and all those chemicals that were in Basin F, so they thought they'd pump them underground. Moved out here to Lowry Landfill, or the area, I'm sorry, the Lowry Landfill, found out, geez, we got a Superfund cleanup site. What the heck is going on? We're trusting government agencies, and I'm not pointing the finger at you, please, but as an overall, we are trusting, we are trusting you as a government agency to provide those best practices and keep us safe. Well, you failed my parents at the Arsenal, you failed me at the Lowry Landfill, and we're about to fail these people again by allowing this oil company to go underground, however deep it is, and pump high-pressure water and sand to extract oil. To what end? Really, do we have a real clear picture of what's happening? They had a clear picture at the Arsenal, they had a clear picture, they thought, at the the Lowry landfill. That wasn't the truth. You know, you get out here to the Lowry bombing range, in the 30s, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna run bombers and, and gunnery schools out here, and then, holy smokes, we're out here in the 70s picking up unexploded munitions. We think we got it all. They're still working on it. It's pretty safe out there. But anyway, I would just like to say all that, it's a matter of trust. We are trusting you with your vast knowledge into this, to take a clear picture of this and understand, again, that we are, as a group, trusting you to make a decision that best serves the population here and not allow this until we have a real clear picture of what's going to happen in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right, we're going to move to the folks that signed up online. I'm going to call five names out. Once again, if we could have folks come up and be ready, we can move through this. Paul Varoutzos, V-A-R-O-U-T-S-O-S, Jenny Roth, Kevin Chan, Marla Burkhaim, Kristen Miller, and Haley Young. We'll start with Paul. Oh, we did Haley.
Hello. I am a resident of Aurora, Colorado. I am extremely concerned with the proposed Lowry cap and its well pads proximity to so many homes, schools, and the Aurora reservoir. Your mission as the ECMC is to administer oil and gas rules that are protective of public health, safety, welfare, wildlife, and the environment, and to represent all stakeholders, including Colorado state residents, who are the ones who suffer the consequences of oil and gas development. The science here is clear: oil and gas development negatively impacts people at distances far greater than the Lowry cap ranch well pads are proposed to be from homes. Oil and gas development affects our water. A 2014 study and various others by Christopher Kosotis and co-authors found that in Colorado, natural gas drilling operations result in elevated endocrine-disrupting chemical activity in surface and groundwater at distances greater than the Lowry cap well pads will be from homes and the reservoir. Oil and gas development also affects our air. Studies by Gabrielle Petron show that in Colorado, oil and gas development releases VOCs to distances greater than the Lowry cap well pads will be from homes. This impact on air and water quality affects our most vulnerable populations. Elaine Hill, in her study titled "The Impact of Oil and Gas Extraction on Infant Health", shows negative outcomes for newborns and their mothers at distances greater than the Lowry cap well pads will be from homes. Furthermore, the Harvard study titled "Exposure to Unconventional Oil and Gas Development and the All- Cause Mortality in Medicare Beneficiaries" shows negative impacts on the elderly at distances greater than what is proposed by the Lowry cap. If your mission is truly to respect all stakeholders and to protect public health, please deny this cap as proposed and consider denying the cap without more restrictive and comprehensive third-party water and air quality monitoring, especially at the reservoir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Roth?
My name is Jennifer Roth, and I live and work within the boundaries of the Lowry Ranch cap. Many of the people who are here today are in the same situation, and there are many people who are not here, even though they're all so deeply upset by the cap proposal. Unfortunately, many of my neighbors do not have faith that the government officials like yourselves will look out for their best interests. They've been burned in the past by decisions that put money in politics above the public good. But I'm more optimistic because I've looked into you all and the ECMC, its mission, its members, and I know things are not the same as they were five or 10 years ago. Your mandate is to regulate and protect public health, safety, welfare, the environment, and wildlife resources. The Lowry Ranch cap decision is an opportunity for yourselves, as a fairly new regulatory body, to demonstrate your commitment to that mission. Approving this project would be a gut punch to each of the areas that you've pledged to protect. I'm just going to highlight a few points related to health and safety, that portion of your mission. There is clear evidence, as many have spoken to, that proximity to hydraulic fracturing operations harms physical and mental health. This includes increased rates of childhood cancer, birth defects, cardiac hospitalization, and respiratory diseases. This is concerning to me as someone with a heart condition and as the mother of a child who will be attending schools within one mile of the proposed sunlight-long well pad throughout the drilling, completion, and production phases. Studies have also shown that people who live near fracking wells experience higher levels of psychological distress. This can manifest as anxiety, depression, and a general reduction in quality of life. Anxiety and depression are already at record levels among children and adolescents. Some experts have suggested that spending more time outdoors is a good countermeasure to improve mental health for these children, but that won't be a great option for kids who can see and hear the wells from their playground. When reviewing this cap, consider that most of the proposed well pad locations are within two miles of suburban communities that are densely populated, mostly by families with school-aged children. Civitas is adhering to the 3,000-foot setback, but, you know, some of the homes are 3,062 feet. So do the extra 62 feet really prevent health and safety risks? I think if it was your house, you would agree, it's too close, and you probably wouldn't buy that house compared to one that wasn't steering at a well pad. You have the power to protect, the power and responsibility to protect the health, psychologically, safety, financial stability, and just quality of life for hundreds of thousands of people. You have the power to say, no, the mitigation efforts proposed by Civitas are not enough to effectively reduce the potential harm of putting wells in these locations. Please remember why the ECMC was formed and the mission that you pledged to pursue. Prove the doubters wrong and deny the cap. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chan?
Hello. I want to thank the Commission for letting us have this local hearing. I know it's the first in the state. I hope that many other communities utilize this opportunity to show and demonstrate how the community actually feels about projects that are happening within their neighborhoods. It's a travesty that we have Bella Romero and schools like that being impacted by pretty much these operations 24/7. I, I understand the need for energy, and I understand that we have essentially given the mineral rights to, to the operator. But we need to also understand that we need to give the right of freedom and life to the children, to the community. And I thank everybody for being here tonight and showing solidarity against this, against this, this project. I really want you guys to understand, and what I, and what I have always pushed in my capacity, is community voice, having a level of understanding. And I, I find it highly unacceptable that the Commission would give us such short notice about this meeting. I understand that you do have, have a deadline for the cap, but we were given about 10 days from when the time was actually released to rally all my neighbors, the community, and to get the word out. That is not being in good faith and partner with the community. But I do, again, I, I do thank you for being here, understanding it, and I know it's the first one. So hopefully, when you guys iterate, it will be better. And I do thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Is it Ms. Burkhaim?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My name is Marla Burkhaim, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my husband, and our two teenagers. We are residents of South Shore, and I am finishing my 26th year of teaching kindergarten in Aurora. My son is an inspiring photographer who loves taking wildlife pictures at the reservoir. We paddleboard, bike, walk, and swim near our home often. My husband and I are fourth-generation Colorado natives, and we are all extremely worried about this fracking project. The research is clear time and again that fracking absolutely contaminates our water, our air, and our land. It is reckless to put so many residents, students, and community members at risk. Fracking this close to homes, schools, and businesses is absolutely unnecessary. To put our whole well-being at the hands of Civitas is completely irresponsible. The very first pad in the cap immediately violated the lighting regulations. The lights could be seen from over five miles away and burned way too bright near my home. The spill in Erie is highly dangerous and concerning, and Civitas has shown us exactly who they are and what they care about. They do not care about safety. They do not care about regulations. They have shown us time and again that they don't even want to do the bare minimum to keep our community and our state safe. We moved here from a different area in Aurora because of the open space, the wildlife, and the very easy access to healthy and safe outdoor recreation. We urge this committee to please consider our physical safety and force Civitas to stop this project. My family and I are imploring you to safeguard and protect our health, air, water, and wildlife, and our lifestyle by denying this cap. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Hi, I'm Kirsten Miller. Thank you for your public service and the opportunity to be here tonight, local to where the fracking would occur if you chose to approve this, um, this proposal. I'm here because I want to urge you to deny that application. I'm a mom. I'm here tonight with my 12-year-old daughter, and I have a five-year-old at home with my husband. I'm a voter, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm also a public servant. I work at Buckley's Public Space Force Base, and I'm one of your southeast Aurora neighbors. I've been writing letters to you since 2022, when I first heard about the Lowry cap proposal. And I have to say, I attended the community meeting that was supposed to be a community meeting, but it was north of Buckley in February, and it was about 30 minutes from here. And that caused a lot of concern for me. The letters that I've received from Civitas and the conversations that I had with the oil and gas company representatives there talked about 20 to 30 years of existing wells and drilling. And then, when you ask them about the commitment to monitoring for, for water and air contamination, that's three years. That's a huge disconnect. When you look at the, the odors that the wells will produce and the, the visual mitigation that would be needed, to me, that's another huge disconnect between Colorado Parks and Wildlife, which does not have an eight-foot fence line in comparison to what the Arapahoe County Commission and the Civitas reps have, have stressed that they're able to, to put forward eight-foot fencing, which permits a lot of that visual lack of mitigation. I'm very concerned because our, our Commissioners talked about making the, the most stringent statewide rules, and they were working hard to pass that. And what I'm seeing, in effect, is not very strong. We heard that wells would be, I think, operating 12 hours a day. And the letter that I got last week says it's going to be 24 hours a day, six days a week. I'm looking at the noise emitted rules from the facility pad. They should not exceed 60 decibels. Well, that's like the sound of an air conditioning going all day. Not 12 hours, which we thought was bad when we were talking about the giraffe regulations. It's 24 hours. So as a neighbor, I really, I thank you for your consideration, and I urge you to deny the application for the Lowry Ranch cap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Julie Hugan, Randy Randall Willard, John Kumantukas, Wendy Hanafy, and Brent Goodland. If those folks could come up and be ready to testify in order, that would be great. You're up.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioners. As someone who sits on one of the City of Aurora Commissions, I fully and particularly appreciate your service on this commission. My name is Julie Hugan. I live in Talon's Reach, and my home will be fracked if you approve the Lowry Ranch cap. But tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Arapahoe and Douglas Counties. The League advocates for public hearings in the communities where oil and gas development could occur. Hundreds of residents have come out to express concerns about the Lowry Ranch cap and previously filled another building here at the fairgrounds, as well as the county hearing room on multiple occasions. Not everyone attending tonight may choose to speak, but so they can still be heard, we will ask for audience participation at the end of our comment in accordance with your rules of conduct. The Lowry Ranch cap endangers public health, safety, and welfare, and the environment and wildlife in Arapahoe County, including densely populated residential areas of southeast Aurora, Lowry Ranch, and one of the largest tracts of native Tallgrass Prairie in Colorado, and the Aurora Reservoir, the drinking water source and major outdoor recreational area for hundreds of thousands of Auroraans. Fracking will further pollute the air and degrade the air quality of the North Front Range, where the air has already been downgraded for ozone nonattainment from serious to severe and will create transportation air emissions equivalent to an additional 100,000 vehicles per year on local roads. Fracking will use 4 billion gallons of fresh water that will be drawn from Colorado sources, and this at a time when Aurora has just paid $80 million for a farm's water rights, and some eastern Colorado farms near here cannot irrigate after 2029 because of lack of water. The Lowry Ranch cap will frack not only the Aurora reservoir, but also the Dad's landfill and the Lowry landfill superfund site, which contains 138 million gallons of industrial waste. Fracking-caused bedrock microfractures would threaten the superfund site and the Aurora reservoir, as well as, importantly, the Denver Basin aquifer system that sits below these sites. These are the concerns of the League of Women Voters of Arapahoe and Douglas Counties regarding the Lowry Ranch cap fracking of southeast Aurora, where tens of thousands of Coloradans live, work, and go to school. And now, we ask the audience to please raise your hands if you are here to protect the air we breathe. Raise your hands if you are here to protect the water we drink. And raise your hands, and keep them raised, if you are here to protect our families, our homes, our environment, and our wildlife. With our raised hands, we ask the ECMC to protect public health, safety, and welfare, and the environment and wildlife, and to disapprove the Lowry Ranch cap. Thank you.
Thank you. Randall Willard?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here. There are many, many things included in the cap documents, but what is more telling, in my opinion, is what is missing. To list a few of these, there is no wildfire plan, nor is the fact that much of the area exists in a wildland urban interface taken into account. Seismicity and related issues are not addressed either. Expanding this list, we must be aware that the operator has agreed not to drill under the Lowry landfill superfund site, but has provided no other provisions for the impact that a fracture could have on this critically dangerous site. The possibility of a massive spill is a grave concern for the residents across the Front Range, as the aquifers that supply the area would be compromised. Finally, the City of Aurora has a water purification plant currently operating adjacent and connected to the reservoir. This facility, which costs $650 million, is not addressed anywhere in the plant. Further, the facility is down gradient from proposed pads and sits within the buffer zone of one of the wells as well. Water for 400,000 people comes from this facility, which processes 50 million gallons a day. It is obvious from the oversight, if we can call them that, that the operator is concerned about their bottom line and nothing else. The impact of these misses in the plan will be significant to the people and the wildlife in this area. They also cross the line when reviewing state legislation in which all of these are to be addressed to the satisfaction of regulators and citizens. It is critical that the cap be rejected on these and other grounds listed throughout the evening tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Kumantukas?
And I apologize, I probably butchered your last name. No, you did a good job. Thank you. Thank you for granting this unprecedented hearing to have concerned community members speak tonight. My name is John Kumantukas, born and, excuse me, John Kumantukas, born and raised in Aurora, Colorado, live in the South Shore neighborhood. In, in regards to the Lowry Ranch cap, we know people leaving Aurora and going to nearby cities. This isn't good for the city that my wife and I were born and raised in. Our parents live here, our family lives here, and if this project moves forward, we will be wanting to flee the only city we have ever called home. There are two elementary schools close to the proposed fracking site. My wife works, and my children go to these schools, and this is not good for the health, their health and well-being. I'm not a scientist, but I trust the individuals who have studied fracking and its health impacts. There's no guarantee my children's health won't be impacted from the air they breathe and outside at recess or at our neighborhood pools. There's no guarantee the water we drink or the water we play in at the Aurora Reservoir with water sports won't be impacted. There is a limited ability to monitor these sites on a 24/7 basis outside of what the There is a limited ability to monitor these sites on a 24/7 basis outside of what the I used to be a financial statement auditor in the oil and gas industry, and on numerous occasions, I saw various financial impacts from settlements, lawsuits, you name it, for things that should have been prevented by the safeguarding activities from these organizations that failed to happen. Please stop the Lowry Ranch cap from moving forward, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wendy Hanafy?
Yes. My name is Wendy Hanafy, and I currently live in the buffer zone of the cap. I'm a retired wildlife biologist, and I spent most of my career at Colorado Parks and Wildlife. I want to address the proposed project impact on just one of this species of special concern, the northern leopard frog, and use it as an example of just one of the species that's been wholly neglected in the mitigation plans. While a species of special concern is not a statutory category that requires action to protect it from further decline, it's in everyone's best interest to do so. These species are experiencing severe population declines and habitat loss that, if they continue, would qualify them for state-threatened or endangered status. 10, I want to suggest 10, well, some potential mitigation strategies based on 10 pertinent studies in the literature, and I'll provide you with complete citations and abstracts of each. The first five studies delve into the impact of human-produced noise from various sources on frog coursing and breeding behavior. For northern leopard frogs, breeding typically occurs from mid-March through early June, with males calling females from a breeding pool. Anthropogenic noise, particularly low-pitched noise associated with traffic and construction, is a significant environmental stressor for these frogs, leading to decreased ability to call and decreased reproductive success. While there is no research on the impact of drilling noise and vibration, it is reasonable to assume a significant effect. The sixth study recounts the precipitous decline of northern leopard frogs in Colorado and documents all possible causes, including road mortality. The final four studies cover road mortality in depth. Northern leopard frogs are very mobile, especially during the breeding season and when moving to summering or hibernation sites. Rain events during any time of year also stimulate overland travel. As an example of negligence, I'd like to point out that the report prepared by HWA Wildlife Consulting for Crestone Peak Resources operating for the state sunlight, state-long proposed well pad and access road clearly shows northern leopard frog findings within 1,000 feet of the proposed pad and what they call potential riparian habitat. There's absolutely nothing potential about this. It's a perfect breeding site for northern leopard frogs with shallow water roughly 4 to 26 inches deep, with emergent vegetation and surrounding grasslands for foraging. I don't know whether the HWA consultants are ignorant of the research and life cycles of northern leopard frogs, or if this was a willful example of, a willful omission of information to placate decision-makers, but the problem must be addressed. If ECMC approves the plan, and I sincerely hope it doesn't, this is one example of a species, and here are some of the following conservation concessions that must be considered for the entire cap. The first is that no construction, road travel, or operations be allowed from March 15 through June 15 each year to allow the frogs to breed and travel.
Ms. Hanafy, if you could wrap up, and you've got some really detailed notes.
Just last one. The second is that the Crestone pays for longitudinal study of the pad's impact on breeding populations of northern leopard frogs within a mile of each pad during the duration of operations as should conclude any changes in calling, reproductive behavior, reproductive success, roadkill numbers, and ongoing water quality monitoring in frog-occupied drainages. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you. Wait, wait. You've got some detailed notes and some detailed writings. Could you make sure that you give that to us in writing or email it to me so that we can have it? Great, we'll make this part of the record. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioners and Director of the ECMC for being here today, coming to our community to hear our concerns. And a very heartfelt thank you to everyone else in this room who took the time out of their very busy lives to come here today to voice your concerns about our air, our water, our wildlife, our climate, and our children's future. My name is Brent Goodlett. I'm a climate and environmental justice advocate for the people of Colorado, and I speak, I don't speak on behalf of Coloradans, but I work on behalf of all Coloradans, those alive today and those generations still to come. I stand here in firm opposition to the Lowry Ranch cap and could list more than a dozen reasons for why you should not move forward with this ill-fated plan. But to keep my comments short and sweet, I will only focus on a single reason, which is, in my opinion, one of the biggest reasons and completely a sufficient reason to deny the cap wholly and completely, and that is the issue of ozone. We all live in an ozone non-attainment area that has been out of compliance for the Federal Clean Air Act since 2005. The leading contributor to ozone in the Front Range is fracking, and it is poisoning over 4 million Coloradans every summer. Every summer, we have to deal with this, day in and day out. We have children have asthma attacks on the schoolyard. We have elderly folks struggling to breathe, just walking up a flight of stairs, and it's not their fault. It is not their fault. It is the fault of unbridled oil and gas development across the Front Range, and it is, the responsibility for this lies solely on this commission and the Air Quality Control Commission, for they are the two entities responsible for keeping our air clean from oil and gas development, and they are the ones who are failing to do so. Every last one of the four caps who have been permitted, or the Lowry Ranch being the fourth, are within the ozone non-attainment area, every last one of them. And we just keep permitting like it doesn't even matter. Like, when do we stop making the problem worse? When do we start making it better? I don't see any plans for this. I do see a lot of, like, complicated rules being implemented with a lot of calculations and really, like, supposed well-thought-out strategies. Well, I've got one really simple strategy: Stop fracking. Just stop fracking. It's really that simple, and it really is that urgent. 4 million people are being poisoned constantly from ozone, and to say nothing of the climate impacts and to say nothing of everything that will come if we don't stop these wells. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next folks, I'm going to call up five more names if we could get them up. James Rudeboris, Diana Levy, Leva, Mark Goldsmith-Cammon, Kristi Snovicki, and Donald Kitter. Any of those folks want to come on up? Go ahead, sir.
I'm Mark Goldsmith-Cammon, speaking as a resident of Aurora who lives only one-half mile from the Lowry Ranch and one mile from the largest of the proposed well pads. We only recently moved here into our forever home, attracted by the open spaces and healthy Colorado lifestyle, which is now seriously threatened by this proposed project. The Lowry Ranch cap proposal is in need of far more detail on many more critical factors. It is basically incomplete and far from being a comprehensive area plan. Just a few examples: Geologic and geophysical studies must be performed to map the potential undiscovered deep faults in the proposed fracking zones that are common in the Front Range. Fracking wells could intercept these faults, allowing oil, gas, and toxic-produced water to migrate upward into our overlying aquifers, into the basements of our homes, into streams, and other high-priority habitat. It also does not account for the potential threat of induced seismicity from both fracking fluid injection and withdrawal of fluids. Scientific studies have shown that this is true for the fracking process itself and not just for the disposal of produced water in injection wells. This poses threats to the Aurora Reservoir, its dam, and the Lowry Superfund Site, as well as our homes and our other sensitive infrastructure. We note that the Lowry Superfund Site was removed from the cap because the U.S. EPA has concerns the fracking could cause environmental damage. We believe that Aurora residential neighborhoods and the Aurora Reservoir deserve the same consideration and protection. Civitas likes to claim that they and their projects are sustainable. To demonstrate this, they need to wait for the cumulative impacts rulemaking process to complete, so that we are applying the most up-to-date and effective controls to make sure we're not destroying our beautiful, diverse, and fragile state that's already facing so many issues. We need a comprehensive plan, and right now, this proposal is just not it. Even though Civitas has agreed that up-to-date maps showing more surface features with bore lines would be useful, all of our efforts to secure those from Civitas have been ignored. This cap should be denied in its entirety due to the unacceptable risk to human health, public welfare, and the environment, given that the proposed well field would be directly underneath the Aurora Reservoir, many thousands of residential homes, a dozen schools, and thousands of acres of high-priority habitat. There are simply too many sensitive receptors, human, ecological, and infrastructure at risk, unlike other oil and gas developments in the remote areas of Colorado. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Come on up, state your name and talk to us.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kristi Snovicki. A year ago, my family and I moved to South Shore with our six-month-old daughter. Our home is on the eastern edge of the neighborhood and will be one of the closest to state sunlight. This is where my daughter will play and breathe the air for years to come. My family will be just 3,000 feet away from these wells for the next 20 to 30 years. Altitude Elementary, with its 1,000 students, will only be a mile away for 30 years. The Lowry Ranch cap is located within the Front Range, is classified as severe non-attainment for ozone pollution, and our area already suffers from unhealthy levels of air pollution. Adding over 160 new oil and gas wells will only make this problem worse. It would be irresponsible for the health and safety of all the nearby residents and children for this cap to be approved as is. I'm also deeply concerned about the impact that would have on the wildlife nearby. Our family cherishes seeing the pronghorn antelope and Angus cattle roam behind our home. The high-priority habitat buffers alone do not meet the SB 19181's requirements to protect the diverse wildlife in this area. To protect this viable ecosystem for future generations, oil and gas drilling should be banned in the Lowry Ranch area. I urge the commission to prioritize public health, safety, welfare, and environmental protection in its decision-making process by denying the Lowry cap application, or at a minimum, please delay the cap application until after the new cumulative impact rules take effect. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Donald Kitter, Aurora citizen. Well, you've heard a lot of good arguments tonight about not passing the oil and drilling operation here. I'm going to take a slightly different tack. Let's jump ahead. Let's say it's approved. What we're dealing with is a risk-reward situation. The risk to the Aurora citizen is water. I'm glad to see all the panel chose bottled water and not oil tonight. Second thing is the state. The risk to the state is lawsuits absorbing extreme costs if there's a major disaster. There won't be an "if," it's when the disaster will happen. There's countless reports, oil/gas leakages, spilling into streams. It's going to happen. One story in Denver quotes three, an average of one person in the oil industry died every three months over the course of 12 years. It's a dangerous operation, not only for us, for them too. Where's the reward? We take all the risk, water, oil, damages to the environment, health. Where's the reward? The oil side. They get the rewards. Let's address the structure of how they will operate. They've done it before, just to the north of us. I believe it was the Broomfield area. They had oil wells that were sitting there, ready to cap. They put them into a corporation. Whoop, the corporation went bankrupt. The state ate capping all the wells and the cleanup. Similar operation. They'll create an LLC, limited liability. The profit takers will be behind the scenes absorbing the money. The shell will be left, and the state will end up eating the cost. They will be horrendous. In Aurora, 145,000 housing units. Zillow quotes about 497,000 a house. That's about $72.5 billion in real estate value alone, not talking cancer, other health issues, et cetera. We haven't seen the reward side. How much are they going to suck out of the ground? How much will the oil industry make? What I propose is quite simple. If it proceeds and passes, make sure there's a performance or a surety bond in place, probably an amount of about $1 trillion, to cover all the expense, because people will be looking for jobs, the housing market will collapse, and the state will be struck trying to save the environment and cleanup. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. All right. I had also called up James Rudeboris and Diana Levy. Are either of them in the room? All right. We're going to take a five-minute break. It is 6:40, and we will return at 6:45. Thank you. Okay, folks, let's get going again. If everybody could take their seats. All right, everybody, we're going to get going again. I'd ask everybody to take their seats and stop talking. All right. Next up, we have Haseem Coats, and then we have Jason Randalls, Kirsten Miller, but I think Kirsten's already testified, Christina Johnson, Amber Golden, and Bonnie Rader. Mr. Coats, lead us off.
Good evening. My name is Haseem Coats. I am also a candidate for Rappahoe County Commissioner, District 5. Before I begin, I also want to say thank you to the children. Right, I appreciate when the child came up and spoke, and they're here telling us exactly what they want to hear. Also, before I run out of time, as I begin my speech, I just want to make sure that I say I'm not in support of this, and I ask you all to protect the environment. But I do like to thank you all for taking time this evening to go ahead and have this type of meeting. My experience of being in politics for over 30 years, I hope this is just not a meeting of placation. I hope this is really a meeting, when you saw the hands raised this evening, of saying that, hey, we want our environment protected. So with that being said, it's important to understand that there will be significant harms to the wildlife and their habitat. Lowry Ranch is a unique natural space, and it has approximately 80-plus of Lowry Ranch, specifically the entire area of South Quincy Avenue. It's designed as part of the storage ship, the natural values identified during the designation, including wildlife and wildlife habitat. Lowry Ranch site is one of the few remaining areas in the Piedmont Grassland ecosystem in the world that is good to very good conditions. I think that's something that should not be taken lightheartedly. And this is largely due to it being undisturbed and unfragmented. Additionally, several important creeks run through this area. The wetlands associated with these creeks create a unique ecosystem within the watershed. Consistent with the Lowry Ranch Asset Management Plan, surface occupancy of disturbance within .3 to .5 miles of any creek or wetlands areas should be restricted or prohibited. The buffer zone should start at the edge of the wetlands area. The proposed cap site and ancillary structures would adversely affect vulnerable wildlife species. This includes over 20 animals, including mammals, birds, and amphibians. Additionally, butterfly species and plant communities, including the State Wildlife Action Plan, are also found in this property, from the action plan, are found in this property as well, too. The largely undistributed 40-square-mile area in and around the Lowry Ranch cap has been a valuable and rare grassland wildlife habitat. The area contains important zones around creeks that have been critical habitats for specific types of frogs, foxes, and other animals as well. The extent of the concentration of well pads and ancillary facilities will fragment this habitat. It's going to destroy it. So you have an opportunity to take a stand for the future generations over the desires of those seeking to increase profits. I ask you to reject the cap and preserve the habitat, not only for the future generations, but also because it's the right thing to do. And it's to do as good stewards of our resources. I started off thanking the kids, but I'm closing remembering our seniors, and my grandmother specifically. She always would say, "Prevention is cheaper than cure." This is not the first time where the warning has been cried before the action. Let's not repeat history. Let's actually make it. Thank you, Haseem.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jason Randalls. My wife and I and our two kids live in South Shore, and if this project moves forward, we will literally have a front row seat to this. But I'm confident that it won't, based on what's been said here tonight, in addition to my statement, which is as follows. Lowry Subarea Plan from 2007, published by Rappahoe County, contains goals and policies to protect the quality of surface and groundwater on the Lowry Range. Goal RS1, and specifically Policy RS 1.1 in the plan dictates that new development must address and follow the principles of resource-sensitive growth, including conservation and reuse of water, protection of air, soil, and surface and groundwater quality, protect national, natural areas and wildlife habitat and migration routes, and provide open spaces. The fact that fracking on this scale will permanently remove billions, with a "B," of gallons of water from the water cycle, permanently, introduce massive amounts of pollution into the air, creates a serious risk of surface and/or groundwater contamination, and disturbs or destroys existing natural areas and wildlife habitat, is in direct conflict with this goal and policy. In addition, these activities will introduce additional light and noise pollution, and I don't even want to think about the potential consequences for not only our community, but the greater metro area, should these activities affect the Lowry Superfund Site in any way, shape, or form due to the hazardous waste stored there. All of this is sure to reduce the quality of life due to the impact of leisure activity, enjoyment, and the physical and mental health of not only nearby residents, but those who come from other areas to enjoy the unique opportunities the reservoir and surrounding areas provide. Lastly, this type of activity will most certainly negatively impact property values, reducing county revenue, and impacting county funding and services. In closing, I believe that the risks associated with this project moving forward far outweigh the benefits. In fact, from my perspective, the only party that would benefit from this project moving forward would be the applicant and operator. As such, I urge you and any other powers that be to reject this project for the benefit of the community and the surrounding areas. Thank you.
State your name and talk to us.
Hi, I'm Amber Golden. Thanks for having me tonight. I live in Talons Reach, and like many of the residents here, my house is one of them that will be fracked under. I'm about two and a half miles from the closest well pad, but my son's high school is about a mile, so Cherokee Trail, is about a mile from the closest well pad, which is really unfortunate. So I'm here to implore you to not approve permits for the Lowry Ranch cap. On your website, and as was stated earlier by the gentleman in the blue coat, the stated mission of the ECMC is to regulate the development and production of oil and gas in a manner that protects public health, safety, welfare, the environment, and wildlife resources. We've all heard of the communities in Colorado that have experienced negative impacts from oil and gas operations, including air and water pollution and health problems. Civitas's own Cumulative Impacts Report displays the repercussions we should expect from the Lowry Ranch project. Civitas's report states that this project is expected to emit 902 tons of NOx and 766 tons of VOCs during the peak emission year alone. And believe me, when I moved to Colorado and realized that all paint here is low VOC, I was so excited. But then oil and gas gets to do this. It's really, like, the paradox is so shocking. So the EPA, as many have pointed out tonight, has designated the Front Range as being in severe non-attainment of federal ozone standards, and our metro area is ranked seventh worst in the nation on the ozone pollution list. According to the American Lung Association, breathing ozone irritates the lungs, may harm lung development in children, and can even be deadly. I believe that issuing permits for new fracking operations so close to our homes, our schools, and the reservoir, when we are already in violation of health standards, is reckless endangerment to our community. Additionally, I've witnessed oil and gas representatives at other meetings act as though water contamination from Lowry Ranch is not a concern. However, page 13 of Civitas's Cumulative Impacts Report, again, sanctioned and paid for by Civitas, states that along with potential spills and releases, stormwater runoff during construction and operations could carry potential contaminants to nearby surface waters. And again, on pages 23 and 24, the report states three methods by which contaminants could reach our groundwater. Civitas is telling us in the Cumulative Impacts Report about the public and environmental health assaults that this cap would cause. What additional evidence do you need that approving these permits defies your stated mission of protecting public health and welfare? On a personal note, I moved to Colorado three years ago, and despite having a sister in Thornton, we wouldn't consider moving there because of the proximity to fracking. The risk of water contamination, noise, and light pollution, increased traffic, and worsening air quality will ensure discerning families feel the same about our community if these permits are approved. I hope you will protect us from this fate. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Christina Johnson or Bonnie Rader? Come on up, Christina.
Good evening. My name is Christina Johnson, and I am a resident of northeast Denver. I live just 15 miles away from the Aurora Reservoir with my husband and my two young children. I want to thank everyone here tonight for allowing me to come to your community to share a perspective from someone who lives beyond the immediate vicinity of the proposed project. I would like to begin my statement by expressing empathy for everyone involved in this issue, whether they support or oppose this proposal. We all care deeply about our communities, our livelihoods, and our families. We find ourselves in a situation that has no easy answers and demands careful consideration of both immediate needs and long-term consequences. As a resident deeply invested in the well-being of my community, I must express my strong opposition to the Lowry Ranch cap application and urge you to reject this development proposal. The decisions before us are complex and fraught with economic and social costs. However, the potential risks associated with this fracking development far outweigh the benefits. We understand that rejecting this proposal may result in the loss of jobs, tax revenue, and even part of our local identity, which is intertwined with the history of energy production. However, we must also consider the devastating impact that this project could have on human life, property, and our sense of security. Firstly, the health implications of fracking are well-documented. Studies have linked fracking activities to increased rates of respiratory problems, cardiovascular issues, and even certain cancers. My husband, who suffers from asthma, and my two young children are particularly vulnerable to the air pollution and chemical exposure that accompany fracking operations. Moreover, the seismic risks cannot be ignored. The injection of wastewater from fracking has been associated with a significant increase in earthquake activity. I grew up in another state that was highly prone to earthquakes and have been through countless small and even a few major earthquakes in my lifetime. I would respectfully ask you to please stop texting while I'm speaking. At least you can offer me the respect of your full attention. Thank you.
Folks, just for the record, that's how Commissioner Ackerman takes notes.
Thank you. I appreciate that context. I know that the homes and buildings in my neighborhood are not designed to withstand seismic activity, so the potential for catastrophic damage is very real. We need to protect our community from the threat of earthquakes triggered by fracking activities. Additionally, the environmental impacts of fracking are severe and far-reaching. The risk of water contamination from fracking chemicals poses a direct threat to our drinking water supplies. The Aurora Reservoir, a critical source of water for our area, could be compromised, affecting not just our community, but the entire region. While the Lowry Ranch cap proposal might offer short-term economic benefits, the long-term risks to our health, safety, and environment are too great. I urge you to reject this proposal and instead support initiatives that promote a just transition to renewable energy. By doing so, we can protect our community, secure our future, and honor our responsibility to both present and future generations. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Rader?
Good evening. I'm Bonnie Rader. I'm the Chair of the Lowry Landfill Superfund Site Citizen Advisory Committee, and I'm here tonight to share a little history and to bring to mind that if we don't review our history, we're doomed to repeat it. I'm very concerned about the Lowry cap and the effects it is going to have on this community that you see here tonight. So let me give you a little of my history. In 1960, the federal government deeded 2,600 acres of land located at the corner of Quincy and Gun Club Road to the city and county of Denver to use for public health purposes. For nearly 20 years, Front Range industry and domestic households disposed of their chemical and domestic wastes into 80 unlined pits on the Lowry landfill. During that time, the pits were open, and my family experienced numerous health effects. The most dumped chemical at the landfill was benzene. And nearing the time that the air was filled with chemicals that came into my home three miles away from my home, my family experienced nosebleeds, headaches, bronchial pneumonia with no fever. My kids couldn't play outside when the barrels would explode and the chemicals would come over our homes. And it was a terrible experience. And my concern is that with the drilling industry, benzene is one of the most prominent chemicals that will be released into the air, and every family in this room will chemicals that will be released into the air, and every family in this room will be doomed to have to live with that air and the chemicals that are prevalent in it. In 1980, a new law called Resource Conservation Recovery Act became law and declared it unlawful to dispose of chemical waste into unlined pits such as the Lowry landfill. And because of this new law, because of the people in Love Canal fought after their families became ill, they covered the pits, and all of our health impediments went away. When they did cover the pits, it was good, but it reminds me a lot of what Civitas is doing now. They've come to us and said, "It won't matter if we drill under the Lowry landfill. Nothing will happen. We're too deep." It's just like when the city of Denver started bringing raw sewage sludge out to our area, the Lowry landfill, and landfarming it in. And we started smelling the sewage, and we started having sludge flies in our homes. And when we'd call and talk to the state and talk to the city of Denver, they'd say, "That sludge is safe enough to brush your teeth with." And we all said, "We don't believe it." But it took years for them to determine that the sludge was not good and that the chemicals in the air were impacting us. And I can remember appealing to the Health Department, to the EPA, "Please, my kids are sick." And they would say, "It doesn't, it's not from the landfill. It's just a trash landfill. It shouldn't be hurting you." Well, finally, when the pits were covered, our symptoms went away, and they moved the sewage sludge into what's now called Metro Grow. And they're putting on farmers' fields, and they're worried now that that sludge has PFAS in it. And there are some states now where they have been confiscating the dairy cattle because they're worried that the PFAS from the sludge is getting into the milk. So I'll close just by saying that because that we're going through Arapahoe County, what we're asking for is to take a seismic study to specifically determine the protective ness of what is now a larger and more dangerous Lowry landfill site and a vulnerable Aurora reservoir. The state land board and Arapahoe County have an obligation to the public to assure that their final approval is best on best available technology and cost-benefit analysis versus immediate gratification. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the list, I'm going to read off four or five names. Barbara Dungy, Katrina Fox, Robert Graham, Molly Jacobs, and Robert Kahn. Any of those individuals are allowed to come on up and speak to us.
My name is Barbara Dungy. I'm a resident of Aurora. My husband and I moved here in 87 because Colorado was a beautiful state, and we really wanted to enjoy this beautiful state and live here. I find this comprehensive area plan in its current form horrifying because I think we have learned a lot now over the many years since the 1800s, the 1920s, the 1950s. We don't just dump things in a hole in the ground and leave it uncovered and walk away. You know, we don't pollute the water. We really have learned why we don't do these things because of the risks to the public. And, you know, we've talked tonight about just, my goodness, it's like a menu of choices. We've got, you know, the problem with air quality, the problem with, you know, burdening our limited water resources in these days of climate change. We've talked about the expected health risks. We've talked about the expected lowering of property values and probably taxes too in the state because, you know, there just isn't a lot of an upside here for the public. So, you know, I came up here intending to remind you, but everybody's already done that, about Senate Bill, the Senate Bill that asks you or mandates you to be concerned about the public health and safety as well as to our environment. And I just want to say that I thank you for your service and for your time. I know it's not fun sitting here tonight, listening to all this, but I really think you have an opportunity. I think we're at a crossroads here. We can keep doing the same types of things that are not good for the public, not good for quality of life in Arapahoe County and Colorado, or we can make a change. And I've made a commitment. This has really had legs. I've been in touch with a couple of hundred people in various community groups around the state. People up in Wealth County, they know that that liquid is coming, that toxic wastewater from the fracking if this is approved. We've got the Denver Basin aquifer. We've got, I understand that there are plans for a couple more water facilities in the area. Are we going to sell some of that water to other municipalities? I've been talking to people in other, you know, Denver, Thornton, wherever. And so I'm just saying, I think we're at a crossroads, and we can do the old ways, which I don't think serve the public anymore. Or you can be heroes, heroines, and do something that's better for our children and our grandchildren. And I'm putting it on my calendar, these 300 people that I've been in touch with around the state of Colorado talking about this, in a year, in two years, in five years, in 10 years. Let's just see how this turns out, and are we happy to have done this or not? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dungy.
Dear Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening to hear the concerns of this community. My name is Katrina Fox. I am a proud resident of the Wheatlands neighborhood in southeast Aurora. As a mother, wife, and nature enthusiast, I'm here to express my strong opposition to the Lowry Ranch comprehensive area plan. This proposal poses a severe threat to our community, our environment, and our health. This proposal will directly affect nearby neighborhoods including Tollgate Crossing, Soil Ranch, Pomeroy, Southlands, Forest Trace, Wheatlands, Beacon Point, South Shore, Talons Reach, Heritage Eagle Bend, Whispering Pines, Serenity Ridge, Blackstone Country Club, and Butterfield Trails. Each of these communities depends on the Aurora Reservoir, not only for recreation but also for essential water supplies. The Aurora Reservoir is a vital community hub, providing a place for swimming, boating, walking trails, and family gatherings. The Aurora Reservoir also hosts numerous charity events, highlighting its importance as a community and cultural asset. It supplies clean, pristine water to all residents of Aurora, some of the cleanest residential water in the country. The Lowry cap jeopardizes this precious resource and by extension, our way of life. The Aurora Reservoir is more than just a body of water to me. Multiple times a week, after dropping my son off at Pine Ridge Elementary, I walk the mile to the reservoir, relishing the sounds of water lapping on the shores, the songs of birds, and friendly greetings of neighbors, as well as throughout the year, my family and I cherish all activities that the reservoir provides. The Lowry cap threatens this cherished haven and possesses significant risks to our community. Here are a few reasons why I stand firmly against this proposal. Firstly, the homeowners in this neighborhood will see their largest investments, our homes, lose value. The introduction of fracking near residential areas significantly decreases property values, and in mine and many others, it will create conversations about moving away from my dream home and my dream community. Health risks are also a significant concern. According to Dr. Ted Shetler, children living within two miles of a fracking site are seven times more likely to develop cancer. Altitude and Woodland Elementary Schools are both within a mile of proposed fracking sites. Pine Ridge Elementary, where I drop my son off every day, and my home are within two miles of a proposed fracking site. Water scarcity is another critical issue. Colorado's water resources are limited, and the reservoir currently supplies 31% of our water. The contamination risk from fracking, including potential leaks and spills, could be disastrous, costing an estimated $100 million if the reservoir were contaminated. The fracking process itself requires vast amounts of water, 24 million gallons per well, permanently destroying over $4 billion gallons of fresh water throughout the life of this cap. The proximity of the cap to the Lowry Landfill Superfund Site is another grave concern. Fracking could destabilize the bedrock, causing toxins to leak into the soil and aquifers with catastrophic consequences. Additionally, the natural habitat around the reservoir is home to many species, including eagles, raptors, and the endangered swift fox. The proposed wells will be located alarmingly close to wetlands and the reservoir, threatening these ecosystems. In light of these concerns, I urge the ECMC to reject the Civitas Resources Lowry Ranch cap. The cap endangers our reservoir, homes, communities, and lives. I implore you to consider the long-term implications and prioritize the health and well-being of our community over the short-term gains. Thank you for your time in considering the voices and concerns of our community.
Thank you.
So my name is Robert Graham. Thank you very much for having this opportunity. I am going to talk mostly about the transportation side of this, but first let me remind you and tell you thank you for coming, as well as thank you for your staffs, who have been very responsive to my emails that I've been sending. After the cap was put out initially back in February, I spent a great deal of time reviewing it, and what attracted my attention was the map that was put in there by Civitas was false. They actually showed the Hall Road to be next to the reservoir, which was proven, actually the county came back to me and told me that the Hall Road was actually 1.7 miles away from it, and the map was incorrect. But what that did would cause me to be concerned about if Civitas is going to send out to the public through the comprehensive plan, a document that has a map of where the Hall Road is going to go. What else are they doing that's incorrect? So that made me think about the transportation side of this completely, and focus only on that, my attention on that. I wrote about a 10-page argument, which I sent to all of the staff, many of you, and said, with my comments, asked a series of questions as a citizen, and hopefully, the answers to those questions are being proposed and provided to you. What's happening now is you're to the point where you're going to have to make some decisions, and based on what we've heard today, there's lots of questions that you're going to have to ask and have answered, hopefully, before you make a final decision. We received, earlier this, back on May 9th, we received a letter from Civitas that went out to all of us as citizens. And in that letter, they told us about what they were doing, they were moving ahead with their application. I wrote back to the city, or to the county, and my letter I wrote actually, I think, should have been written by you. And I'm going to read you my letter, because I think letters like this are going to have to come from you, and the actions I requested are the actions you're going to have to ask when you're, before you make a final decision. So here's my letter. Note in the May 9th letter, Civitas states, "The drilling operation will span approximately six days for each well," which you've heard, "operating 24 hours per day. Fracking operation will occur in approximately 45-day period. Long-term production may continue for 20 to 30 years," also what you've heard. The letter did not cover the quantity of water required to support the operation. Specifically, people have mentioned water, but there's no note that says exactly how much water, nor the wastewater removal, nor the build and support of the road on the public property within the ranch. That's the Hall Road. There's an existing dirt road there. That road supposedly is going to be rebuilt up to some set of standards so these trucks can run back and forth. Nor the damage to the public roads over which the construction, the water, and the waste trucks will travel. The letter does not cover the agreement to finance the potential damage caused by spillage from the trucks, nor the shutdown of the well after the 30 years of operation, which you've also heard mentioned, especially after Civitas has sold the rights to a second party, which you've also heard. I raise these issues in response to Civitas' open house. I have not received a single response from my party. So hopefully, you will get answers to these questions yourself that you will ask. So my actions were, "Please send me a copy," meaning you should, "a copy of recent transportation study conducted by the county that covers requested Civitas application. This study must have all the truck traffic, data, truck weights, et cetera, and should have been completed within the last four months as the Civitas operating details became available." Four months, not two years ago, not three years ago. Please explain to me the quantity of production water required and the source. The quantity determines the weight and the quantity of trucks necessary to dispose, and they're moving into the fracking area and out of the fracking area. How much weight, how much water is the truck going to carry? What's the truck going to weigh? Please send me a copy of the financial calculations that the county has used to determine the level of bonding and other financial tax actions that will be applied to the application for approval for the potential damage and closeout of all participating areas. Primarily, I'm talking about the transportation area. So please determine those types of questions and be tough on the people giving you the answers before you make your decision.
Hi, I'm Robert Kahn. I am a citizen of Aurora. My house backs up to the reservoir. I'm an 82-and-a-half-year-old grandfather, and I moved here about 15 years ago to be near my daughter and my grandson. And about 13 years ago, I started developing respiratory problems, and now I'm learning why. So I'm concerned because I use the reservoir a lot. I have to walk, my doctor said, and I walk the reservoir when I can. I like to go to the beach, and I swim. Sometimes I rent a paddleboat. And I love doing photography of the birds and the wildlife at the reservoir. I know that fracking releases gas and pollutants into the air, so that's part of why I'm getting these symptoms, and I think it's endangering other people as well. I am opposed to fracking at the Aurora Reservoir and anywhere near it. I'm concerned that fracking breaks up the ground, the rock underneath, and it will severely damage or destroy structure of houses and schools that are in the area. The Aurora Reservoir is our main water supply. And in a state that has very little water and often finds itself in drought situations, as a taxpayer in Aurora, I am only allowed to water my lawn twice a week for only 10 minutes a time. However, this project will enable them to use almost $4 billion gallons of water. And in a state that really has no water, that's an unconscionable waste of good water. That water that's used in fracking is laced with toxic chemicals to do its work. If God forbid, there is a leak anywhere, that leak brings that toxic chemical into the groundwater and will find its way into the Aurora Reservoir. It will kill fish and wildlife. It will contaminate the water, and as far as recreational ability at the Aurora Reservoir, it'll be impossible. So I implore you, in the interest of safety and good health and a healthy environment, please, I beg of you, deny this application for the benefit of everyone. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn. Are you Ms. Jacobs?
I am. My name's Molly Jacobs. I am a citizen of Arapahoe County. I'm here for my mom and my aunt. They both have lung issues. My mom is, or my aunt is on an oxygen tank 24/7. She actually lives in Denver, which is not that far from here. And Denver went from having the seventh worst air quality in America to the sixth worst air quality. So we have an air quality problem here, and it's frustrating that I have to politely and respectfully ask for you to protect my community from a billion-dollar company. We're not really seeing the benefits of their work here. They only create 3% of the jobs. They're taking all this oil out of our land, and they're selling our oil to foreign countries. And, you know, we might need that oil somewhere down the line. I also think that it's an outdated energy source. We don't put lead paint on children's toys anymore because we know it's dangerous and harmful. And the fact that we still allow the drilling to continue in our beautiful state is disappointing. We have less than six years before climate change is irreversible. We've already seen the effects of climate change and natural disaster. disasters increasing, not only in Colorado, but all over the world. Brazil is flooded right now, and we don't have much time left. I spent a lot of time this last legislative season down at the Capitol trying to help pass bills that would protect my community. I understand that this billion-dollar company wants to run their billion-dollar business, but I have a feeling that none of the people that run that company actually live in this community. And I don't think they would, I don't think that they would drill in their backyard or near their home or near their children. So I'm asking you, as our protectors, to please reject this proposal, stop all of the drilling. As my dad would say, if I had my druthers, I'd rather that you didn't drill at all. But, you know, unfortunately, that's not the world we live in, so please just do your best to protect us. We're not billion-dollar people here. Most of us probably aren't millionaires either, so it's up to you to protect us from them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. All right. Next up, we have Faith Arguwal, Joanne Hackus, Art Salsida, David Anderson, and Michael Dorsky. Any of those individuals are invited to come on up and speak to us? Go ahead, sir.
My name's David Anderson. I didn't plan to talk, so I didn't have a prepared speech. Moved back to Colorado where my first son was born to be with our two grandchildren. We chose South Shore because of the reservoir and the beauty of that area, and I was just disappointed to hear about this stewardship of leasing our land to some oil company to frac the hell out of it, where we all know fracking is not healthy. You've heard all of the health issues, air and water. The big companies always say, "It's not going to matter. It's not going to hurt you." Microplastics, fertilizer, pesticides, ozone, you name it. It's in our water now when they said it wouldn't get there. So why take your stewardship, give it to this company that's going to take their money and run when they've got it, and we're going to be left with some kind of wild wilderness that looks like Elizabeth, New Jersey? If you want to live with this crap around you, go to Elizabeth, and you'll have it. I don't want Elizabeth, New Jersey in my backyard.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Hackus. I'm the chair of the Colorado Sierra Club Oil and Gas Committee. When I was growing up, the first time I ever heard about Lowry was when my father told me that he had trained at the Lowry Air Station how to learn how to bomb Germany. The next time I heard about Lowry were emails and phone calls from the people who are here tonight. Two years ago, when people called us panicked because they didn't know what to do. They had been approached by agents who were asking them to sell mineral rights under their homes, and they didn't know what they meant, that meant. They heard from local schools who were being asked to sell the mineral rights under the schools in order to raise money. You've heard today from lots of people who've talked about the personal concerns that they have about the reservoir, about the water supply, about the homes, about the air, about the animals, the endangered, the threatened species in the area. You've heard all of those arguments we've been hearing for the last two years. So who benefits from this? The company? Arapahoe County? As you, the city of Aurora? The people selling water? The people who are going to make millions, or if not billions of dollars, out of this cap? That benefit does not come to our state in many ways. As you know, most of that oil and natural gas is now being sold out of the country. We're concerned with the people here, the impact on them. We really, really hope that in this case, unlike all the others we've heard about in the last five years, that you will consider the the appeal that the people are making to you to not let this happen. I hope you're listening. Thank you very much.
My name's Mrs. Arguwal, and I'm here for my kids, and thank you so much for this opportunity. And I'm wholeheartedly hoping that you are listening with the intent to have actionable measures from this comment session. I remember the first meeting I ever attended on this proposal was with my four-month-old daughter. Now she's a year and a half, and it was a town hall with Francois Bergen and Mr. Moore in February of 2023 titled Mineral Rights Leasing and General Updates, the first and only informational about this fracking plan that was local to us. The people representing us promoted oil and gas and did not educate. The takeaway message was that goose poop is more dangerous, and the fracking will happen anyway, and you'll be force-pooled, so you might as well take the deal. The room was full and disappointed. At the Arapahoe County Commissioners' meetings, they had, they allowed us to do a full public comment, and then at the end, pulled out a sheet of paper and read that their prepared comment to decline our input. I live and breathe here with my children. They're on the school playgrounds. I have almost full visible visibility of the access road that Civitas shows is at ground level that nobody can see. And I told them during their meeting, "Hey, I can see that truck thing that's sitting on the access road." And they're like, "Oh, are you on the hill?" And I'm like, "Yeah, along with all the other houses." And that was it. And I'm like, "Okay." I ask that you decline the cap based on SB 19-181, as it's reasonable and necessary from the numerous factual data that's been presented to you today about the severe non-attainment of ozone, water misuse, drought, air pollution, effect on health and safety of residents, the reservoir, the recreation, and the revenue that comes from the reservoir, the seismic repercussions, superfund site, habitat biodiversity, and everything in that list holds so much weight. I've been coming with my daughter for her entire life, and I just, I mean, we all feel so lost. We've talked to everybody, and you're the people that make the decision. And I've went on, I went on a Zoom and listened to you talk, and, you know, the operator said, "Nobody opposed." And I'm like, you know, screaming inside, like, "We oppose these, you know, wells." So I'm so glad that you're here to listen to us, and I've heard, you know, you had great, you know, comebacks at them, like, "No, you can't do that. You can't just list whatever you want and do it." So, so please listen to us, because I'm so glad, you know, it's like talking to celebrity. I'm like, "I guess to talk to you." So, thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Art Salsida, and my wife and I live in the South Shore area. And I do really want to thank you guys for spending the time and listening to us and really, really listening to us, because there's obviously a lot of opinion out here, and it makes it a long evening, but I do, I truly appreciate that. But just like everybody else, I certainly urge ECMC to, to, you know, reject the Lowry Ranch cap proposal. My focus is kind of on the water side of things in the Aurora reservoir. It's a heavily visited place. You've heard a lot of this already, but, you know, it provides water to us. It's a, it's a key reason why my wife and I moved to this area less than two years ago. And as soon as we found out about the fracking, it was really, really a frustrating time for us to hear about that after moving to such a beautiful location in South Shore. And, you know, and you've heard a lot of this as well, but the priceless value of clean water, I mean, that is just so valuable, especially in, in this state. And to lose that, or to take a chance of losing that, which is, would likely happen at some point in time, is, is really problematic for us as well. I know you've heard about the 4 billion gallons of water. In fact, I have a lot of notes here, but you guys have heard most of them, so I'm going to kind of skip past some of them. But the, the frac, this fracking in many locations are problematic, and, and the water that's used for that, that's just a ton of water that we really don't have. And, you know, another point is the location of the superfund site in relation to the four large aquifers that supply much of the metro Denver, so even metro Denver could easily have a water issue there as well. The, you know, Civitas claims that they go above and beyond requirements for environmental protection, and they're, they're committed to sampling wells within one-half mile of the cap well pads. However, they've identified five drinking water wells and two streams within a half a mile of the Wetterhorn Handles Well Pad, yet they're not planning to sample any of those waters. So just back to the comprehensive plan, not being comprehensive, not really taking all the due diligence that's needed there. That's very, that is very obvious to me. You know, we've seen problems. I know that New Jersey was mentioned, but problems in Pennsylvania, West Virginia, you know, because of all the PFAS that gets released into the air when, when fracking is happening. And so really, and I will close out quickly here that, in my mind, it really would be negligent for ECMC to fail to consider the impact in the short term and the long term of all the residents already living in the area, including ourselves. So, and in my, in my opinion, the risks are much higher than any of the eventual rewards that would get out of this project, and that this proposal should definitely be rejected. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm going to raise a slightly different issue. I could, again, would support, all right, first let me introduce myself. I'm Michael Wurzmann. I'm a Purdue engineer, have my MBA from Indiana University. I work in the field professionally in sustainability, specifically the automotive industry. And in fact, this morning was giving a webinar on our efforts to reduce energy and carbon throughout the supply chain, manufacturing side for the automotive industry. And that's totally relevant to what we're looking at here today, because as we look at what's going on, we have to look at the bigger picture. What we have learned in manufacturing is that we have to take a look at life cycle assessment, which means taking a look at all of the impacts, both positive and negative, that come from a project such as this. As we heard at the start of this, we're probably, for every dollar that we get as a community, long-term, we're probably going to lose $10 in terms of the total cost, environmental damage, remediation at the end, and the rest. And from what I know, looking at these type of assessments, that number sounds a little conservative to me. But be that as it may. But what we have to look at here is what are we, really is important. We're looking at the need for energy at the state, at the need for revenue for both our county, our state, and our local, and the need to protect the health of our community and our long-term resources. Therefore, one thing that's been missing in all of these plans is a comprehensive life cycle assessment analysis of the alternative use of this land. We know we are about nine years away from practical, large-scale geothermal development, which would have a significantly less impact environmentally and otherwise. We know we have a lot of sunshine out here as far as what are the solar, and as you heard, we have a lot of prevalent winds, which are both eastern and western, which is what raises the fire risk, for wind energy, and taking a look at what we need to do in terms of our energy management solution for the state. We know in automotive, we have global efforts underway to eliminate the need for carbon. Yes, batteries are the short term. Hydrogen is the longer-term solution that's being looked at. We need to be forward-looking, and actually, before we approve a short-sighted project which has tremendous downsides and risks, what can we do long-term strategic that will provide more revenue for the state, more revenue for the county, more long-term energy for the country, and protect the health? This is something that really needs to be evaluated as part of this, as we are looking for the future of the state, and, as I said, managing our engine and carbon emissions. Thank you for the opportunity to raise this issue.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to call the next panel up. Michael Dorsky, Katie Collins, Bill Krosser, Sue Ebertsberg, Chris Sutton, and Louis Avalos.
My name is Michael Dorsky. My wife, my wife and I are residents of Talia's Reach. I want to thank you today for giving us the opportunity to speak. Being a former volunteer on a sewer and water authority commission, I know the amount of work that goes involved on this, so I thank you for your time here today. Like pretty much everybody else who spoke today, which I think is interesting, that everybody here seems to be in agreement, I am against the Lowry Ranch cap proposal for pretty much all the reasons that have already been stated. Rather than going over the same matters that you've already heard, there's a couple of things maybe to be thinking about if you are going to eventually approve, which I hope you don't, the proposal, but there are certain items that maybe to mitigate some of this. One of my concerns is that the chemicals that are pumped into the ground, there's a number of proprietary chemicals that are used. Those are not, you know, stated to the public. I understand why that might be, but I think it's very, very important that we know what those are, if not the public, at least some people do, that we research that, find out what the baseline is right now for it, and then study those to make sure those are not increasing. I'm also concerned with flaring, which is commonly used for the excess methane that's produced. Flaring helps a little bit the methane, but a lot of that, other organic chemicals are still going to the air. There are other methods other than flaring, which I think should be used. I fully understand that it's more expensive and the costs are higher, but I don't think that should be the only factor. I also think that particularly in the event that we do have, unfortunately, any spills, we hope we do not, of any other disasters or more studies that may determine at some point down the road that cancer rates are increasing, that we need to be able to get a sufficient bond to cover the increased cost to both real estate values and medical costs for our local hospitals. In addition, I would like to also see as part of that performance bond, monies be set aside for potentially every household in this community to be given a water filtration system if that's what's determined. This would require a very large bond. I don't know what the amount would be. I heard a $1 trillion figure from one gentleman. I'm trying to be a little more reasonable, but I think maybe at least $100 billion might be enough to cover that. Anyway, those would be my comments. I thank you very much and for listening to us.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsky.
Is my microphone on? Oh, thank you. My name is Bill Kresser. My wife and I followed our grandchildren here about four years ago to Aurora. I have a PhD in chemical engineering, and since the late '60s, I've been working on identifying pollution sources and fixing the problem so that the pollution didn't continue to occur. By 1974, I became associate professor of environmental studies at the West Virginia College of Graduate Studies in Charleston, West Virginia, where we have seven chemical plants about like Suncor. And so my job was to have the 35-year-old workers come in and And so my job was to have the 35-year-old workers come in and train them on how to better produce their product with less pollution. Now, things were moving fast in those days. In 1980, we were using methods that hadn't even been heard of in 1975. In 1985, we're using methods that hadn't been heard of in 1980. So it was a matter of constantly doing better and better, and people that work in pollution control know that, since the population's increasing, the standard of living is increasing, then the emissions from our tailpipe have to go down a proportionate amount to, in order to make, just keep us in the same place. So by 1985, we were in pretty good shape, we had achieved attainment for ozone, and so I got into risk assessment, and that's what you people are doing now. And I was asked to evaluate some government projects, to evaluate the risks and the benefits, and I sympathize with all the information that you have to take in, in order to be able to do that. I also was hired by a couple of companies to help them with their pollution control, and in one case, we took a project that had an awful smell in the neighborhood, and we didn't cut it in half, we didn't cut it to a tenth or a hundredth, we eliminated the problem. In other case, there was a coal preparation plant that we got the same sort of results, and I was told by at least two clients that they had fired their other national consultants, and I was the only person they knew of that could solve these problems. So now we have to look at what to do with Lowry Ranch, and I have to tell you, I can keep up with a lot of those problems, but this is just beyond anything that can be done. Fracking is just not compatible with human life. It's not compatible with life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The current problems with the way fracking is practiced just is going to take a place like Colorado and make it look like West Virginia. You're about 100 years behind West Virginia. 100 years ago, they were discovering resources under the ground and learning how to dig down and get them. And now, there are entire towns that are just boarded up, unoccupied, nothing around except methane, phenomena, and poverty, and that I just hate to see that happen here.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Sue Eberstberger, and I did not come tonight expecting to speak, but I need to share a story with you. My sister and I bought a house here and moved in with my daughter in December. And you can imagine our surprise, we, she and I are both retired. We bought this house to be our retirement home that we would be in forever. And then we found out Friday, this past Friday, about the fracking. And frankly, it was a shock, and not only a shock, but I also have enough experience from living other places that I know realistically what it can mean. I lived in Pennsylvania, and I want to share just some images with you so you have some real images of things. I lived in Pennsylvania when they were starting that fracking projects, and on the news every night, there was more and more information about fracking. And one night, they had somebody turn on their spigot in their house, their faucet in their kitchen, and someone lit a match, and the water coming out of the spigot was set on fire. This is what we're talking about. And that company said, oh, it's safe, it's okay, don't worry, but you have to worry. And I don't care what these people say in terms of, it's okay, it'll be safe, it's not. Another, another place that I lived had a lot of earthquakes, little tiny fractures in the ground, when you push water down in and move it out, takes little tiny fractures and turns those into earthquakes. And those earthquakes take your home and can totally turn it into rubble. I've seen it happen, especially in places where you don't have to build earthquake-proof houses, and that's what our houses are. It will not just cause us $30,000 or $40,000 in our property value, it will make me go bankrupt, and it will make a lot of the people who were here tonight go bankrupt. And that will affect the tax system, tax base in our county, in our area. This is not a little thing, this is our lives. They say in the report that the seismic changes are unknown. Well, guess what? You can know them. You can study them and find out what they are. Saying it's unknown is unacceptable. And y'all have the opportunity to say, no, we need clear information that is not just, oh, well, you know, we didn't have time, we didn't have the energy, we didn't have the money to study it, or we didn't want to know the answer. So I encourage you to ask for not just studies, but an independent study that is done by people who are not related to the company, who can tell us real information about what the effects are, because that's what we need. We need some information that is careful, and that is thoughtful, and that is not biased by the people producing it. I came tonight because I need you. I need help from you. I said to a young woman at the table that signed us up, I said, I need your help. And she looked at me, and I said, this can't keep going on. And she said, I'm just here to organize the place. So I realized, I didn't, I need her, but I need you to protect me, to protect these people. We all need you. We are all counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Sutton, and I live in Tollgate Crossing. As you know, this, if it happens, would be under and near the water supply for the city of Aurora and for the Aurora reservoir. Now, according to the COGCC Daily Activity Dashboard Dataset documents, there were 1,186 oil and gas industry spills that were reported to that, to you in 2023. And in total, there have been 3,749 spills that have been reported since this dataset began aggregating since 2020. That's a lot of spills. So statistically, it's really highly likely that there are going to be some spills if this happens. And to think that there, that this is not going to affect the water in the Aurora reservoir is just wishful thinking. Furthermore, the grasslands to the east of our homes are a tinderbox that could go up, just like the Marshall Fire. And there are thousands, thousands of homes, thousands of lives that can be impacted by these spills and by fires that could be caused by these 24/7 fracking operations. There's absolutely no reason that this fracking needs to happen so close to our homes, except for one reason, and that's greed. Look, I'm also a cancer survivor. I don't need to be near 160 wells that can cause a recurrence of it. And this is common sense. Nobody in their right minds wants to be near fracking, near or underneath their house. Whenever I tell people that this company wants to frac near or under my house, you know what their reaction is? Ugh, ugh, why, ugh, why are they going to do that? That's terrible. As you can see, people don't want this. We don't want this. Look at all these people we got here in such short notice. We represent the thousands of people in this community. We don't want this fracking. You saw all the raised hands earlier. This has to count more than Civitas. There are thousands of lives at stake. If this goes forward, our community is going to go downhill. It will go downhill. But you have the power to save it. You have the power to save our quality of life or to flush it down the toilet. And so it's up to you. We are begging for your help. Fracking does not belong near a water source, and it doesn't belong near thousands of homes, period. Please, please deny these wells. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Collins. I live in Beacon Point with my husband Mick. I attended the Colorado School of Mines and obtained an engineering degree from there. While I was attending the Colorado School of Mines, at first I studied geology, and I worked as a summer intern for the International Groundwater Modeling Center that was co-located on the Colorado School of Mines campus. And I learned about the principle of how water can travel underground along fault lines, just as, just like electricity can flow through a wire. So the equivalent of what blocks electricity flow is a resistor. Same thing happens underground with underground water travel. Rock can act like a resistor. Just like lightning bolts can send a sudden shock of electricity traveling, so can seismic fault lines underground. The very nature of fracking is seismic fracturing, literally crushing underground rock structures to extract the, the natural gas, also creates additional new fault lines that can be a path of travel for pollutants, pollutants from the Lowry superfund site. Also, at the Colorado School of Mines in the geology program, we learned what is a superfund site. A superfund site is the worst of the worst. It's the highest priority, most toxic, most dangerous spill of its kind that the government, the EPA, has ranked and put on a list and put billions of dollars towards cleaning, cleaning that up. And so knowing that water can travel underground through these fault lines and fractures caused by fracking, also knowing we're adjacent to a superfund site, I think that Senate Bill 19181 Rule 314 compels you to complete a full seismic study and risk assessment to prevent and to predict, not if, but when, and what is the mathematical probability of pollution traveling from one of the toxic sites along fault lines into our drinking water? The Lowry cap should not be approved without further study, and that is, I think, the responsibility of your organization under the new bill. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to call up the next panel, Luis Avalos, Nancy Worsman, Aldo Plascencia, no idea how to pronounce that, beautiful name, Reno Reese, and Michelle Key.
My name is Luis Avalos, United States Navy retired. I don't approve fracking, as the majority of you here for. It is more harmful than good to nearby schools and community, and there's no need for it. We don't need it, Aurora doesn't need it. Aurora, Colorado is the third largest city in the state. Do the other, any of the other two cities have fracking areas near large communities like this? I don't believe so. I have not seen any, I have not heard of any. I do know that there are neighborhoods near Greeley that have fracking sites, and they have earthquake issues over there. Fracking leads to both toxins in the air, benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, and xanines, also known as BTEX. You can't just brush, when accidents happens like these, under the rug. You can't brush them under the rug because guess what? They're in the air. You breathe the air every few seconds. Can't just be holding your breath from time to time, hopefully you don't breathe it in. During my time in the service, I have met people who've been victimized by contaminants. One example is USS Ronald Reagan, who was near the Fukushima site when it was contaminated from the radiological disaster that happened there. I met one sailor who had a mastectomy a few years later as cancer started turning up. I, one time in, I believe it was 2014, going into 2015, before my ship, the USS Benfold, was heading to Japan, getting port shifted, I went by to one of our neighboring ships, I believe it was the USS Calpins at the time, and I showed up, and I realized that there was radiation stickers on some of the doors leading to the ventilations. And it's because they were with the USS Nimitz, correction, the USS Ronald Reagan, strike Accidents can happen anytime, and when they do, is approving this project really that worth it? Putting everyone at risk, children at risk? We have gone through two major economic issues since late 2000s. The housing crisis. Look at what happened to Southland Mall. How many businesses left? Look how desolate it became, as we were trying to pick back up, a decade later. COVID, how did Southland Mall once again look desolate? Everyone knows that putting this high-risk project could become an economic disaster. Do you honestly think people want to, want to continue to send their children to these prestigious schools you have right by the reservoir? Cherokee Trail, Fox Ridge, there's a country club just down the street from it. Do you honestly think people are going to want to be there if these contaminants go into the air? We need a place for our children to play, grow, and thrive, not a place to bury them before we do. End up in the ground. What happens if you contaminate, if it contaminates the reservoir? Are you still going to drink the water there? Are you going to grab a glass, stick it into the reservoir? I'll give you a chance to boil it, but those contaminants are still going to be there. The American Economic Association.
If you could start wrapping up, please.
Sir, I did 20 years of the military service, you can give me that moment at least.
I'm giving everybody three minutes, you're at four and a half.
When Flint, Michigan was contaminated, 34%, over 34% of their housing dropped. Nobody wanted to live there. Bringing fracking in at such a thriving city like Aurora, Colorado, is like actually having a bad DJ play at a good party. is like actually having a bad DJ play at a good party. I feel that anyone's approval of this project means that they have selfish gains and benefits for themselves rather than selfless acts for its residents. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, I'm gonna try to be brief. My name is Nancy Worsman, and I live in South Shore. A lot of, I, I don't wanna go over a lot of what's already been said here tonight because there are numerous reasons you should be rejecting this entire project as filed by Civitas. We moved here seven years ago for grandchildren. It, it seems to be a common refrain. When we moved into South Shore, they told us they can't build back there. The only thing that's back there is Kansas. They can't build. There are bombing range. They, you know, their wildlife, they, they are protected. And even to this day, by the way, they're not telling people who are buying houses. They're just not telling them about the project, about what's happening. So I've, I'm, other people have talked about some of the actual impacts. What I'd like to directly address is that Civitas did an environmental health and safety assessment almost a decade ago or close to. And as somebody talked about tonight, they acknowledged that there was, there were gonna be harms and how much pollution was gonna be in the air. All of that. However, there's been a change. Originally, we were told in South Shore, originally, we were told in South Shore a year ago that they were gonna put a pad behind us and there were gonna be like 12, 12 wells on it. We are now looking at State Sunlight, State Long, which they have now combined because they couldn't put them closer to the reservoir. We're gonna have 32 wells. And not only that, the way I've looked at the map, somebody also had mentioned this earlier about the transportation route. I looked at the map. They're talking about putting the access road between the, the well pads and the community, which means if all we're gonna get is 3,000 mi, 3,000 feet from the back of the community, we're talking about having the equivalent of an interstate highway going between our community and the well pad. Think about it. I, I, you know, as I'm hearing tonight, today, I'm hearing beep, beep, beep. That's what's gonna be going on 24/7 behind those homes. The truck traffic, the pollution, the noise. I mean, it's, it's just horrifying to think of it. When Civitas is, I mean, this has to do with their, they only care about their bottom line. I spoke to somebody at Civitas when we had one of, when they did one of their dog and pony shows. And they talked about, they could push these wells, the, the surface wells. They could push them out further. Well, they're not because it's less expensive for them. They said they have the technology today to move them another mile out if they were going to be, if you're gonna approve them at all. But they could move them another mile out because what they're talking about with the, the fracking lines, they can go four miles. They're only doing three miles now, but they can go four, and it's going to become even more than that as technology goes on. Why are they not doing it? It all has to do with their profit. Their, and, and one of my real concerns in this whole area is that they have rules that they have to follow. You're gonna put rules on them. The county's gonna put rules on them. What happens when they don't follow the rules? They'll get a slap on the wrist and they'll stall, and it's not our fault, and other things could be the case too. If they put this in here, the only thing that they're gonna say is whoops, and they're not going to care. They are not gonna care. The fines are not high enough to get their attention. I don't know how you put, put it there and, and allow them to do this with no, absolutely no consequence to them. So I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate you taking the time to hear us out. And I urge you to, to do the right thing and don't let them do this to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Aldo Plascencia. Thank you all for being here. I know you guys have families at home waiting for you. I have children waiting for me at home. And my wife is here. At any rate, I wanted to really, really thank you guys and thank you for your service. I'm a public servant myself. And I have a lot of talking points, but I'm not gonna go with those anywhere short on time. Pretty much my bottom line is I ask you to please consider this as if it were your own community, as if it were your children that you're raising in our neighborhood. And, you know, going to school, seeing the wells and having other environmental impacts, health impacts. And although the fracking might be relatively short-lived, the environmental and health, health impacts may last for many, many decades to come. I am a public servant myself. I work with the federal government and I regulate surface coal mines. And I've, it's very similar to fracking. I've seen a lot of the negative impacts. So I please ask you to think of our community as your own and ask yourself, do you want this in your own backyard? Do you want your children, yourself, your grandchildren to be breathing this air, drinking the water? And here I have Aurora Tap Water, and I'm very happy to be drinking it. And hopefully that would be the case for many, many years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I think I may be the last name called. Michelle Ray, retired educator, PhD in mathematics and statistics. And one of the concerns that I have is the lack of information that was shared by Civitas when they originally started this project. The number of phone calls that I received alone asking me to give up my mineral rights to my property without going into detailed information and the implications and the impact that would happen from selling those mineral rights. That shortsightedness that may come with the long-term project. That information was not shared from the beginning. I did talk twice on the phone with someone and repeatedly said, no, thank you. I appreciate the call, but no, thank you. And I think I received a total of 11 phone calls asking for me to sell my mineral rights. I may still have a recording of one of those somewhere. During that timeframe, no information was offered around the project and the environmental impacts as well as air quality impacts. Specifically, I would also like to go back and reference the information that was stated in the Colorado Sun and what happened in Longmont and the five-year lawsuit that went on with that project and the fight with those community members that I believe some of them were really fighting back related to those mineral rights and the long-term implications. They have now left that area, and it feels like they're targeting our community now. And I would hate to see us in a legal battle as a result of the lack of information shared and the misinformation shared as a result. In addition, I know someone else has already read this information to you, but the EPA study and that superfund site, it, it's appalling to me that we would even consider any type of fracking since the EPA has clearly stated they are concerned with a bedlock, bedrock layer confining the bottom of the landfill. It is subject to microfractures and could lead to catastrophic release of hazardous substances into the groundwater. We have experts for a reason. We should utilize their information. And just to follow up and to end the evening with a pop culture reference, I feel like we're in a, a place and a situation like I'm in Aaron Brockovich right now. And Civitas is PG&E, and I'm being told that hexavalent chromium is good for me. I really don't want that kind of thing in my groundwater. And 10 years from now, having the same situation in the media that we've seen repeatedly in other communities throughout the United States, it's obvious fracking is detrimental to communities and that we are going to see an influx of issues with spills, with toxic waste, with water depletion, with resources. And when I have a letter in front of me that states numbers like 6, 24, 32, 27, rather than 4 billion gallons of water being used for fracking, that's incredibly misleading to the public. It's not written as it should be. And the resource provided in here, no electronic link, so consumers can access the reports and read the information in real time. I need to call or I need to send an email to request information rather than it being actively provided. This is subversiveness at its best. Thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate you all staying late and listening to our comments. In case you were confused, I'm not in support of the project.
Thank you. All right, folks. Folks, I've got a few more. Four more names that have recently signed up. Reno Reese, Kay Taylor, Carmen Hannergriff, and Jared Bynum. Any of those guys in the room?
I'm not gonna have enough time to finish this comment, so if I stop halfway through, I'm doing my best. Thank you, members of the commission and to Arapahoe County, who's not here, for hosting us today for this discussion. My name is Jared Bynum. I'm an environmental justice advocate with Colorado Rising, a lifelong Coloradan, and I grew up just down the street from here, spending my summers fishing and swimming in the waters of the reservoir. I caught my first fish at a youth fishing derby at the reservoir when I was six years old. I didn't win. And I owe my interest in environmental policy to the love of nature I developed because of the reservoir and the awe I feel when I hear the calls of frogs and birds or the wind sweeping through the amber grasslands surrounding our community. I want to ask you to please consider the fact that some of, some places might just be too special to destroy in this way. Habitat and species richness maps ignore the fact that animals travel. Wetlands ebb and flow, and our biological communities shift, grow and change, just as we do. Plans to mitigate impacts are not a full avoidance of those impacts, but rather a supposed acceptable amount of habitat destruction, air and water pollution, and greenhouse gas emissions agreed to by the state on our behalf. These lands, our air, our water, and our families are more valuable than the meager tax revenue to be levied from this development. The concerns expressed today by members of our community are not unfounded or overblown. Numerous studies show the very tangible consequences of proximity to oil and gas development. A 2023 study, Air Pollution and Health Impacts of Oil and Gas Production in the United States, shows that in 2016 alone, there were substantial health impacts proven from air pollution from oil and gas production. Impacts are fairly concentrated in the regions with oil and gas production. However, there's notable spread to areas outside major ONG-producing regions, with NO2 being the largest contributor to health impacts, followed closely by ozone and particulate matter. A 2020 study and analysis of the impact of unconventional oil and gas activities on public health in Oklahoma shows that an increase in the number of unconventional wells has a positive impact on mortality rates. So that's more death. That's not actually positive. And incidences of cancer, cardiac and respiratory disease in communities in close spatial proximity and a negative impact on life expectancy. On average, a 1% increase in the number of fracking wells leads to a 4.2% reduction in life expectancy. A similar trend was observed with the remaining health indicators, where a 1% increase in the number of fracking wells leads to a 6.8% increase in the mortality rate, a 7.9% increase in cancer, a 7.3% increase in cardiac disease, and finally, a 5.9% increase in respiratory diseases. Assessing, a 2018 study assessing human health impacts of particulate matter and ozone impacts from oil and natural gas shows that Colorado alone sees over 70 premature deaths annually as a result of just the pollution attributable to particulate matter and ozone emissions from oil and gas. And lastly, a 2021 study, Associations Between Residential Proximity to Oil and Gas Drilling, shows that developing fetuses are especially sensitive to environmental toxicants, including those produced from oil and gas drilling sites. Existing literature reports associations between exposure to air and water pollution and adverse reproductive health outcomes, such as birth term weight and being small for gestational age. Higher traffic-related air pollution levels are associated with increased risk of adverse birth outcomes as well. And the large number of trucks required for oil and gas drilling yields substantial increases in local traffic-related air pollution. These are neighborhoods. These are homes. This is drinking water. Don't allow oil and gas companies to fracture our communities. Don't approve this project.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry, I didn't plan on speaking, so I apologize for my attire. Usually this is not my professional attire. I just, you guys have heard the numbers. You've heard the facts. I'm really gonna implore upon you to look at the human aspect of this. If I can just walk up real quick and share something with you, would that be okay on my phone? It's really quick, I promise.
Sure. What's your name?
My name's Carmen Hannergriff. I live in South Shore.
Thanks.
Sorry, let me preface. What I'm gonna share with you is a video of students at our elementary school. I volunteer in our neighborhood, our community, and our elementary school regularly. And I want to share with you the many days, one of the many days that our students and our kids, not just mine, but the people here. I know many of the people here, our kids attend the same school. You're gonna see a video of our kids spending time outside less than one mile away from the proposed sites.
Let me, let me make a suggestion. Can you, can I come find you after this is over? And then you can email that to me, and I'll get it to all, all of us so that we can all see it as opposed to on your phone? A lot of kids having a lot of fun. Thanks. I, I'll come find you, and then you can e, e-mail that to me, and I'll make sure it gets to all the commissioners.
So again, I didn't plan on speaking. I'm gonna speak high level. And again, you've heard the numbers. I, I'm a mortgage lender. I work at a local credit union. A lot of my past clients were directly affected by the Marshall Fire. I've had numerous phone calls with clients in tears because the insurance is not covering the expense of their fire that was unplanned. Nobody expected it. And people now cannot rebuild. Their livelihoods are gone. I'm a mom, a working mom of three young ki, I have three young kids. My husband works full-time. I couldn't imagine having that added risk around our house with potential sparks lighting the grass fires and everything around our neighborhood. The other concern I have is the closeness to our homes that the wells are proposed. Back in the 70s and 80s, the wells that were proposed were even further out than the ones that are currently proposed without homes. So I, you know, you've heard that Civitas has said that they would be fine moving the wells. I would highly implore that if this project is to move forward, that that be a condition, that they be much further away from our homes to reduce that risk and allow more containment boundaries in the event of wildfire and the health hazards to our families. I know you saw earlier the amount of people as well here who are in direct opposition of this. I'm a working mom. I came here because this is important to me. I'm in the middle of trying to pack one of my kids to go on a camping trip, another one to stay, you know, at a friend's house this weekend. I came here just like as a voice for the people who I know can't come here and are in direct opposition of this. This is a very, very small percentage of the people alone in my neighborhood of close to 2,000 homes that are not in favor of this for the many reasons we've talked about. And again, I see you're expecting, you guys have families. We are not just people who live out here. We're your brothers, your sisters, your nieces, your nephews, your grandchildren, your children. Would you want them to be exposed to these? Would you, would you implore a commission in your, in your control of something like this to ask to do something for us? So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for staying late. My name is Kat Trailer. I am the organizing director for Working Families Party. And I wasn't gonna speak tonight, so thank you for having me. I have to say that I'm a little bit angry that I'm here, folks. I'm angry that the government that I elected, the one that's been appointed and the one that's been hired, didn't make the decision to squash this topic on sight. We have people begging you to make a different decision. Thank you for hearing them out. But these are families, and they have so much at risk. And we've seen what happened to Bello Romero. We also saw what happened in Boulder. The difference in those two communities is money, folks. Boulder had a deeper pocket to fight back. I'm a middle-class family. I don't have the money to fight back. All I have is my mouthpiece, and I hope you're listening. I hope you're listening to the folks that are begging, which is sad, that they're begging you to do better. I'm not pointing the fingers at you per se, but the system is flawed. It's not your fault. We're all doing the best we can. I'm simply asking you and begging like the rest of these families have been tonight to do the right thing and be on the right side of history so that we don't repeat Bello Romero, which was a disgrace for Colorado. With that, I'll take my seat.
Thank you. All right. Just, just a sec. Are there, is there anybody else that I've not called upon? Come on up. We've exhausted those who've signed up, but we'll hear from one more. Thanks for sticking around with us.
All right, good night, everyone. So I didn't have planned to speak tonight. And I came here with Rachel, my neighbor, and she's the, she's an advocate for Save the, Aurora Reservoir. And she've been coming out to all the neighbors. And I would have to say that somewhat I was like, I'm concerned, but not like concerned, concerned. But after coming tonight, I'm definitely concerned. And I just have three questions that I would like to ask the panel. And you can just raise your hand, no, yes, or no. Just raise your hand. Do you live in Arapahoe County?
I'm sorry, what? The format is for us to listen?
Oh, for you to listen? Okay, all right, then you do. Well, I'll just have you guys pondering this question. Do you live? Do you live in the county? If you do live in the county, would you be in the audience today? If, if you did, if you wasn't working for the EMC board, would you be in the audience today? And if your answer to those questions are yes, then I would, I would bet that you're gonna make the right decision as it pertains to this project.
Great. You got your point across. I'm sorry, can you identify yourself for the record?
Oh, sorry. My name is Tamita Skijanik and I'm a, um, I'm a resident of South Shore.
Great, thanks for sticking around with us. Appreciate it. All right. I'm gonna come find you right after we're done. Oh, okay. Great. Um, all right, well, listen, uh, we really appreciate the folks that are here, that were here. This has been very informational for us. This is the process that we're going through. And we appreciate, uh, your community and the Save the Aurora for asking for this Rule 511 hearing. I think it's been highly successful. We've taken a lot of notes. We will have this, uh, on our website. All of this will become part and parcel of the process. The hearing, as I mentioned, is set for sometime late in June. Uh, I would encourage all of you to remain engaged. There are other opportunities for you to provide written comment to us. I appreciate the written comment that I got right here. We do a lot of reading. And so if you have more particular comments that you would like us to understand, we read everything that comes into, into the folder and into the file. So, um, with that, again, we wanna thank everybody. I wanna thank our staff for the good work here. Thank the, uh, Arapahoe County. And we thank all of you for being here and we look forward to seeing you again.